We'd like to welcome everybody out to Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We'll get started tonight. We apologize again for the late start. We had to wait for the recording device to be found and brought to us. But we'll get started tonight with Commissioner Mike giving us a, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if the audience would please rise.
Please rise.
Repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from last meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from April 12th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The record shows that the minutes have been approved. Our first order of business, Dave, do you want to do these in reverse order since one is not a public hearing?
Your call entirely.
Why don't we do the, why don't we do the public hearing first?
Okay.
So that would, that would be the Trails on Main, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commission, thank you.
Chairman.
Appreciate you being here tonight.
Commissioner is going to recuse himself from this topic and then join us later.
Okay. Jumping into Trails on Main, a few different parts of this request. First of all, I'll mention that the subject property is general plan mixed use. The applicants have proposed, along with the proposed development, that the zoning be changed from the current zone to our residential four zone. That would accommodate the development of a, of a multifamily development consisting of four different buildings, four-story structures. Subject properties identified there in yellow. It's on the east side of Main Street between Main Street and the Spanish Fork River. Right now, there is a large, I think it's a riding arena. They're on the subject property that I know of. That's, that's the principal structure. They're on the site. Incidentally, the subject property is in really close proximity to our river trail, which runs along the eastern side, I'm going to say here, of the Spanish Fork River, but crosses over, you know, right at the subject property to around the western side before it goes up and underneath Main Street and proceeds further to the west. This is something that the Planning Commission has had an opportunity before to see in conceptual form. We've had a handful of conversations with the applicant about their intentions and desire to develop the property. Byron, if you can just go down to, I'm seeing it as L100 is the sheet that they have. And I'm just incidentally going to kind of skip through some of the things, the highlights. Now, the applicant has a presentation that he wants to make. I think he'll probably touch on a lot of things. I'll try not to be too redundant. But, and just by way of a description, that is the proposed site plan. Parking would be provided by the site in two different ways. I would say structured parking underneath the buildings as well as surface parking. The applicants have proposed that a portion of the site be dedicated to Spanish Fork City for use as a public park. That's identified. Apologize, I'm going to grab a pointer in a minute. But, I'm going to grab it right now. You got one over there?
Do we have pointers up here? Because I was looking, what is this?
Maybe I will.
I grabbed this thinking it was a pointer. What is it?
I don't think that is.
Okay.
Let me skip that and just mention that.
There. Okay. Is there just not a button for a laser?
We're learning as we, as we go here, everything's brand new.
Okay.
Come out one of those then.
Thank you.
So, again, just by way of some general orientation. There we go. This being the river and this being Main Street. So, buildings oriented to Main Street, essentially the area between, you know, the developed part of the site and the river is proposed to be dedicated to Spanish Fork City for use as a park. The applicant has also proffered a million dollars to help the city develop that space. Another perspective of the development, showing buildings orienting to Main Street here. Like I said, four-story structures. I would call this the main entrance to the site. Secondary entrance over here. I really think it's fairly self-explanatory and largely consistent, like I mentioned earlier, with concepts that have previously been presented to the Planning Commission. So, that being said, and to try to give as much time as possible to the applicant to let them talk things through, just to cut to the chase relative to the Development Review Committee's recommendation, we do have some concerns with the development in its current form. At present, the way that we calculate how much density people can have in a project, this exceeds 20 units to the acre unless all of the property that is currently in the floodplain is pulled out of it. And it gets frankly to be a little bit difficult to describe exactly what that means and what the opportunity is. But as proposed at least, the applicant is not proposing to pull all of the site out of the floodplain, but rather a portion over here so as to allow for the construction of this building here. That would require work with FEMA to be able to adjust the floodplain map and to make that happen. But density and a lack of conformity with the city's zoning code in that regard is a concern for staff. Let me mention on that point that if this is a concept that you're absolutely in love with and the city council agrees, that can be overcome. Would require a zoning text amendment. There are a couple of different ways that that could come about in order to accommodate it. But certainly today as staff, the way that we would calculate the allowable density on the subject property wouldn't conform and we are not comfortable changing how we calculate it in terms of sensitive lands like a floodplain. So, that's one concern. What we see here relative to the surface parking, that plus parking that would be under the residential structures, that adds up to about 1.8, a little bit more than that, spaces per home. We've had a lot of conversations about parking in recent months. 2.5 spaces per home is what our ordinance currently requires. I believe the applicants prepared tonight to talk about what they could do to provide 2.5 spaces per unit. It would be more surface parking, but as what we are seeing here on this image doesn't meet that 2.5 spaces per home requirement. That also is a reason for staff's recommendation for denial.
What are they under, what are, what are they currently under parking requirements? How many units, how many stalls are they under?
How many are they short?
I could do some quick math or maybe Brandon can on the, the number.
Yeah.
It's the difference between 2.5 spaces per home and 1.82. I don't have that right in front of me right now, but, is it?
Yeah.
There we go. Sorry, that is, that's simply an image that shows what it would look like to meet the city's requirement. And I'll let the applicant speak to their rationale for why they've proposed what they've, they've proposed. And that being said, I think this image speaks for itself. But I'm going to go back here. Either of those, offsite utilities, that is a concern for staff. And yet, truly, I think, like I've said before, if this is a, is a project, if this is a use, that the Planning Commission, city council really feel is appropriate for the site. Honestly, I'm confident that one way or another, the applicant can come up with a way to deliver sewer service to the subject property. We have worked with folks in the past to get projects entitled to some degree with conditions of approval, that they, they address things like an offsite utility need, which in this particular case, it simply is a matter of coming up with a viable route to get a sewer line that can serve what is being illustrated here. As I understand it from conversations I've witnessed with our engineering folks, there's more than one way that conceivably that could happen, at least with one of those, those potential routes. I understand there are concerns about anybody's ability to access that route via private property. And I will mention this as well, that given situations that staff has found the city being in, as we've taken the more accommodating approach in the past of recommending that a project be approved, subject to things being worked out in the future, all the way down to the city being put in the position potentially of needing to exercise eminent domain to be able to help an applicant satisfy that condition of approval. Having been put in those positions, we're certainly more leery today about taking that step than we have been in the past. Might just be unfortunate timing on this applicant's part that they're, they're catching us on the heels of having dealt with some of those things. But getting, like I said, particularly sewer service to the property, that's a concern. And that all being said, kind of as a, as a catch-all, and like I said, I think with where we're at on concerns about offsite utilities, being more, more aware and sensitive to that matter than we have been in the past, there's probably nothing that we're more sensitive to right now as an organization and city staff than any proposal to modify the floodplain. So, in as much as that really isn't inherent part of this proposal regardless of how much property ends up potentially being included in a proposed, proposed modification of the floodplain, staff's very leery of recommending that any projects that would need that be approved at this time. So, I, that's my best effort at trying to touch on, on the highlights of things that have been discussed among staff, with the applicant, in the DRC meeting here in just really the last week or so, at least kind of culminating in the last week or so. But again, the Development Review Committee's recommended that the proposed zone change and development proposal be denied based on the reasons that we have outlined in the staff report. And lest maybe the tone be entirely negative, I really do compliment at the same time, the applicant. I think they've put together a development proposal that has a lot of merit. It's, in my opinion, beautiful design, great amenity package. I think our concern as staff really boils down to this not, at this time, being the right location for that kind of development. But we're largely here to get your thoughts on that, so.
Before we hear from the applicant, Dave, what is the setback from Main Street to the, the front building? Do we know?
I think it's on the order of 20 or 25 feet from the right-of-way line.
And the path there, they're showing a path on there. Is that, but it kind of reroutes or they just, they're keeping the path in place, just jogging it a little bit?
So, the path, you say the trail along Main Street?
The trail along Main Street, yeah.
Yeah. That would, that, I think that does get relocated slightly at some of the intersections and, and perhaps Mr. Hatch can, can.
But from Main Street to the front of the building is 25 feet-ish?
The Main Street right-of-way should be at about the outside edge of the asphalt path. So, from that to the buildings, I don't recall if it's 20 or 25 feet. We can certainly check on that. The actual distance from the trail to the building, we'll zero in on that here real quick.
Okay.
Any other questions for me before?
Do we have the applicant here?
We do.
Do we want to hear from them first and then open up the public hearing?
I think that's most appropriate. You guys.
Is that one advancing?
Yeah. You have a jump drive or something like that?
Yeah.
Let's, let's switch over.
So, if you'll stay in your company.
Sure. Mike Hatch with Land, L-A-N-D-D. Appreciate you having us here today. Can you put that up on, click on slideshow at the top and then from beginning over there to the left? Thank you. All right. Appreciate you guys having us here today. We're very excited about this project. We spent a lot of time trying to make something that we could be proud of and the city could be proud of. I'll skip over some of the things that Dave already went over. There's the location. You all know where the big green horse arena is. Currently designated on the general plan as mixed use, as Dave said, similar to the uses around it. Across the street kind of from where you've recently approved a lot of things in Sky Meadows, there's the zoning R4, R3, R12 commercial. We're currently zoned RR and we're next to that C2 piece. So, overview of our project is 279 total units, 15.8 acre site. There's 21 studios, 139 one bedrooms, 101 two bedrooms, 18, 18 three bedrooms. Market study from the management company was done to kind of determine those ratios. You'll notice there's also kind of a growth element in there so that, you know, it's really important to us to provide a nice lifestyle. If people love the lifestyle there, then they outgrow their unit, then they've got all sizes to grow into. The coolest part about this project is its proximity to the river and to your beautiful trail that you have. We really saw an opportunity looking at this because right now, the city has this amazing trail, but they've got, you've got a parking lot over at the sports park and another one at Poplar. There's approximately 4.18 miles between those two parking lots. That's between bathrooms, between facilities, everything. So, when we got working with the staff on this, we thought, geez, this would be a great opportunity to, in essence, open the trail and the river up, not just to the residents of this, of this community, but to the city as well. Provide a trailhead, a place for people to park, a place for people to use the bathroom, things like that. So, this is approximately one mile in from sports park, from the parking there. There's just a quick overview of our site. I know you've seen, seen this stuff already from Dave's presentation. And so, I'll kind of go through here fairly quickly, just kind of some illustrations, renderings of some of the amenities and the way the lifestyle might be here. So, as I said before, we think it's an amazing spot to put parking, bathrooms, totlot, hydration station, things like that. Public trail access, there's, there's a number of spots to access the trail. Right there touches the trail, right here touches the trail. This is right where that bridge is, if you guys have, have gone over it, this bridge right here. And then, interesting thing, what we've been able to design is in essence, a loop of our internal network that in essence loops through here, comes over here and connects to the existing trail, and then loops clear around to here. So, the concept behind that is, is that a mother could put her kids over here playing on the totlot and basically do a half-mile loop around her kids where she's always in close proximity to them, but could still get her exercise in and not have to worry about her kids quite as much as if they were tagging on behind her. Really neat place that we think has utilized the river excellent is Boise, Idaho, where they have the Green Belt. I don't know if any of you have ever seen that before. But in essence, what Boise's done is, is created a whole network of trails and parks along the river. So, instead of the river being inaccessible, they've made it very accessible. So, in preparation for this project, we actually drove down to Boise and searched around for a project that we felt like fit what we were trying to accomplish here. We found this project right here. I'm going to show you real quick. And this video kind of shows, it's in essence, their project is about, similar ratio to ours, about half, half residential and half open space. And then it'll kind of blend into our project. So, I'd like to just show you this project real quick so you can get an eye on what we're trying to accomplish here. Maybe. Oh, no. Starting slow. Here, let me go back to, and then I'll, straight. There we go. We, you know, we were walking down through the trees there yesterday and it's just, we feel like this is an amazing opportunity to create a beautiful spot for the city. In, in working on this, we decided to meet with the Parks Department. They informed us that they've got a city mandate to have a park within a half-mile of all residents and that currently the city's budget makes them hard for them to meet that mandate. By the time they buy the land and, and develop the land, it's very difficult for them. So, they, they expressed that they would support this type of project. And we've actually met with them and gone over the type of amenities and things they would see in this project. And, and this is designed accordingly. They've also expressed a willingness to maintain this park space once it's developed. As Dave said, we are proposing to contribute to the city 6.2 acres of park space. We estimate the value of that land at around $3 million. In addition to that, we are proposing to contribute a million dollars to the city to ease the burden of developing that park. We are also, in, in, in essence, we are also asking for a waiver of the parks fee, which would equal up to about $814,000. That's the building permit fees that we've paid to the Parks Department on this project. Parking, as Dave said, parking's a big issue in the city right now, something you guys have talked about a lot. 2.5 unit stalls per unit is, is very cumbersome on a project like this. But I know, that's your ordinance currently. So, what we did is we went and did some research on neighboring cities and tried to see like what other cities are requiring from people. Here's a couple of samples. Now, what this does is this takes into account our exact unit mix and figures out what we would be required to have in these other cities were our project in those other cities. This is just to give you guys a thumbnail of what's going on around. You can see like Lehigh 1.76, there's a 1.5 up to 2, 2.13 in Springville. To show you the methodology of how we came to that, essentially I'd look at the city's ordinance. So, let's take Lehigh for example. Multifamily one bedroom or less, they require one stall per unit and one guest stall per unit, for every three units, and one enclosed for, one stall to be fully enclosed or in a parking structure. And then theirs is a, is a two-line code where it's, the next one is if it's two or more bedrooms, it's two stalls per unit plus the one guest stall for every three units, same one enclosed. So, if you take those calculations, this is just a simple spreadsheet where here's our unit count at the top, here's Lehigh for example. You'll note that one studio apartment required one stall per unit plus .33 guest stalls. So, that ends up being 1.33 per unit and one enclosed. So, the total studio requirement would have been 21 enclosed and 28 total. So, we do that same thing for the one-bedroom, the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom. And then over here, you get the total parking count that would have been required in Lehigh, Pleasant Grove, Saratoga. And like I said, that, that other, that other slide showed far more cities. This is just the methodology. And I can provide you with that spreadsheet. In fact, I've already provided it to the city if you have interest in looking at that further. Now, this, this is not totally to scale. This is, this is in Photoshop copying how many stalls we get here and moving them up. But essentially, the current ordinance would require an additional 191 stalls. I want, I want to explain that us putting fewer surface parking stalls is not saving us money. The landscaping is, is equivalent or probably more than those stalls cost. Our motivation for doing that, for proposing to the city fewer stalls, is we feel like we would rather see that park, that space be green space. You see how much that, those parking stalls ate away at that green space. So, if the city feels like fewer parking stalls might be sufficient for this project, we feel like it greatly benefits the park to be able to provide that six acres of open space. You might also note that we, the city's ordinance requires 60% of the stalls are to be enclosed. We've actually provided 67% enclosed in our design. And those are located under the buildings. There's no unsightly garages and things to look at. The buildings, everyone has a clean line of sight straight out to the open space. As Dave said, we are, we're in the FEMA floodplain part of our property. So, this dark blue right here is the floodway. This teal color is the 100-year floodplain. We are not proposing any changes to our density based off of the floodway. But we are coordinating with FEMA right now to do what's called a CLOMER-F, which is a conditional letter of map revision, to in essence, pull the buildings out of the floodplain. So, basically what we do is we'll put our, our finished grade of our floor, Spanish Fork's code requires it to be two feet out of the floodplain. Our finished grade of the floor right now is actually six feet out of the floodplain. So, in essence, our, you know, so you'd be walking up to get into the buildings. There'll be, the, now, to, to add to that, all the parking and things are one feet above the floodplain, which is FEMA standard. And the entrance to the parking garage, so now the parking garage is actually below ground partially. The entrance to the garage is two feet above floodplain. So, that, the entrance to the garage is at Spanish Fork standard for where a finished grade floor should be. So, the water would have to get to that level before it could breach into the parking garage. And just to give you an idea, right, I mean, where we're at right now, the, it would take four feet of increased depth of the river to breach the bank in the low spot, which is, oops, which is actually right over here. So, from that spot, four feet to breach our parking, roughly our parking lot is another foot above that level. Once again, two feet here. And then our, the main grade of our, of our floors is actually six feet higher than that. So, seven feet, did I do the math right? Seven feet higher than right now. And it's actually a foot and a half higher than Main Street. So, that's just to give you an idea of, of how the FEMA, FEMA works. And we've been coordinating with FEMA to go through the process to do that. And with the city's floodplain manager, Travis. Municipal code in Spanish Fork prohibits using sensitive land when determining density calculations. In order for us to maximize what we can offer the city on both park space and the money that we're offering to the city to help develop that park space, we are asking for the city to make an exception to this rule and to grant us density for the property within the 100-year floodplain. And from a practical standpoint, it doesn't make any sense to pull that property out of the floodplain either. It, these are beautiful, amazing trees. We've had an arborist out there. Most of those trees will be able to stay. Of course, we'll clean up the underbrush and picture, you know, hammock poles and picnic tables and stuff through those trees, but they're, they're fantastic shade. It would, there's, there's absolutely no reason to touch those trees. So, in order for us to contribute to the city, what we're proposing, we're asking the city make an exception just on that 100-year floodplain and grant us the density for that part. Having said that, that's all I have to say today. I thank you for your time and I'd be thrilled to answer any questions you guys have for me.
Any questions? I have a few. Okay. So, you mentioned that your finished floor height will be a foot and a half above Main. What is, what is the overall building height?
It's about.
From that, from finished floor?
It's, it's overall building height? It's, it's overall building height?
I think we're at 45 feet.
Say that again?
He, he thinks 45 feet.
And then could you just explain a little bit, I, I'm a little bit confused on the, the park space amenities are being built. Are, are you, or your partners, are you building all those?
We're negotiable on that. In meeting with Bart and Dell, they expressed that they would actually prefer the funds to help them do it because they've had some bad experiences with developers in the past. And so as I said, I met with them, we kind of designed this with the ideas they had. They said they don't have a park in town that has like more of the picnic table type, pavilion type vibe like this would have and they thought it'd be a really good fit. But they did not prefer that we developed it ourselves likely, but we told them we're negotiable on that. So the development agreement we proposed says essentially the improvements would be similar to this, but would be worked out with the city.
So you'd be turning over the land to them essentially, still to be worked out, then that million dollar...
If that's what they prefer.
That million dollar donation would be going towards the landscaping and the, the pavilions and playground and things like that?
That's correct, yeah.
So when you say that the parking is more expensive than landscaping, it's not landscaping you were doing anyway?
But we're contributing money to do the landscaping.
Right, it's that million dollars.
Exactly.
Okay. The underground parking?
Yes.
The entrance will just be, you'll like sloped it up, two feet above floodplain?
Mm-hmm.
And then it'll go down six feet below?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. I guess I have a follow-up question for that with staff, but that's all for me. Is there anybody else on the head for Mike? Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll let you go sit down. We might call you back up later if anything you want.
I'll be right here.
Comments, comments, public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions for staff before we go to public hearing?
Uh, yes. Dave or Brandon, I'd be interested to know, so, um, I'm thinking about how this is a big tall thing on Main Street and there's going to be another big tall thing on Main Street just up the block. I'm wondering how, following up, uh, is how tall will those finished buildings be? What would be the contrast if they could be here? Do you know where I'm talking about with my question?
You're talking about, it's called Sky Meadows.
Yes.
Project that got approved about a year and a half ago. It'd be comparable, the building height. Buildings there that are adjacent to Main Street are anticipated to be four-story buildings, similar design, flat roof, so certainly comparable.
Okay. We'll open up public hearing now. Fanbase here for this topic. We invite you to come up to the microphone. Please, when you come up, state your name and where you live. And then we'll give you three minutes to make whatever comments you have to make. We'll, we'll keep notes of what you have to say. We'll, we won't answer them right then, but we'll let staff or the applicant answer those questions after we're done. And then just, just keep your, please keep your comments to this topic. If some, if there's multiple people, you get one time, one crack at the microphone. So come up if you want to make one-time comments. If somebody else states your question, we don't need to hear the same thing over and over again, but we, we will make sure everybody's heard. So with that, we'll open up the public hearing and whoever has anything to say can approach the microphone, the podium. Please, come up.
My, my name is Brett McKell. My name is Brett McKell. I live in Sandy, Utah. I own property adjacent to this development and maybe it would be helpful if, if we could maybe have the, the, the picture up of, of, that's on this, so I can kind of show you where my property is.
This one.
Yeah, that one right there. So, I wonder if you have a, is, is there a pointer or?
Hold it.
Like there?
Keep holding it.
Left, is that, is that?
There you go.
So I guess I've, I've been getting a little hot watching this because this is my property right here. And so we've been talking about all the nice trees in this development, but most of those trees are on my property. Most of the riverfront access to the trail is my property. I have a contract with the city, when they put the trail in, guaranteeing me an easement into my property when the, when the adjacent property was, was annexed. I don't see an easement in this plan. In, in fact, it looks to me like they're including my property in their development. No one has spoken to me about purchasing my property or my participation in the plan. So you understand I'm a...
Sure.
A little excited. I don't, I don't know that they have any, I can't see that they have any riverfront property along here. Is my comment.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Great point. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close it to public hearing. Dave or Brandon, does anyone want to address Brett's comments about his access to his land, the easement, if this land is, if his land is in fact being used as part of the acreage count?
Yeah, thank you. I'll take a stab at it, Brandon, tell me what I get wrong. If we go in fact to, it's the existing topography image, Byron, I think it, there we go. So I believe that shows what Mr. McKell's referring to, that with the heavy dashed line there and, you know, ask anybody on Mr. Hatch's team to correct me as well if I'm reading this wrong, but clearly there is some property on the west side of the river that is not being included in this project for purposes of the entitlements. You can see how likewise there's probably some property on their side of the river as well that is part of this fee simple parcel that we're talking about tonight. I can see how, you know, some of the other imagery might be construed to, to make it feel like it's part of the development. I, I believe that as our Parks folks have looked at this, they indeed have considered as if all of the land on the, the west side of the river was on the table to potentially be conveyed to the city as part of that, that park space. But relative to the city following through any commitments that we've made to make sure that there's access, easements and things of that nature, we're generally pretty good about that. Also generally, we don't get to that level of detail. We're talking about like a final plat approval stage or a site plan approval stage, but I made a note certainly to talk to our engineering folks about that, some of the folks that were involved with the construction of the trail and so forth, to make sure that if there's something that, that we should be doing at this stage, we get on top of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any discussion we want to have on this topic?
I have some thoughts on it. So, uh, I have a few different concerns. One is parking. We're still, we're actually not finalized on our, on the parking discussion that we've been having, but the current, but the current parking is 2.5 and I, I currently, I personally, I can, I appreciate the presentation and the justification for it, but I'm, I'm not interested in changing parking currently. I would, but my, I guess before the parking, I would be interested in saying the density, it needs to fit what's the current, what the current zoning is. So it means, anyway.
Current zoning is RR. Master plan calls it out to be mixed use.
Mixed use.
Correct?
Spot on, yep.
Right. And so what's the, so what's the highest density for mixed use right now, Dave?
It's the R4 zone and the, the top end of the density in that zone is 20 homes per acre.
Right. And this is currently more than 20 homes per acre?
I appreciate you bringing that up. I do want to clarify something on that. For purposes of calculating how many homes a developer can have on a site, it's an equation. It's the number of homes times, sorry, I need to make sure I get this right. It's the, it's the units divided by the acreage that gives us the density. So for just illustrative purposes, let's say it's a 100-acre site and they have five acres, then to, I know what, I'm gonna start to tire.
This is entertaining.
Let's say it's a 100-home development. Got to make the math really simple here. On a five-acre site, then it's 100 homes divided by five acres, units per acre, 20 homes per acre in that case. However, if, let's say, one acre of those five acres was wetlands, then for purposes of calculating density, that would come out of that equation. So instead of being 100 divided by five, it would be 100 divided by four. And the density as we define it today would be 25 units per acre. That's at least akin to what we're talking about here, where currently there's floodplain on the subject property. There's also floodway. Floodplain can be modified. I think Mr. Hatch very accurately described what the mechanisms are to get that, to get to that point with FEMA. Floodway cannot be, floodway is generally defined more clearly as the actual river channel itself. So inasmuch as right now, if we looked at the entire property, taking just the floodway out, the applicants are right at 20 homes per acre. However, when we also subtract out what is in the 100-year floodplain, their density exceeds 20 homes per acre. It's because of the math that I just described. Now, if you take some of the floodplain, or rather if you were maybe, that's, getting a little tongue tied, apologize. Let's say that, as I think Mr. Hatch described, they're only required to work with FEMA to remove some part of the floodplain actually out of what FEMA defines as floodplain. They go through the process to amend floodplain maps and so forth, and they're able to do that. If they only were to make that adjustment for part of the, the floodplain that's on the subject property, they still would exceed that 20 units per acre. Hence the request that the city grant an exception to that rule for purpose of, purposes of calculating how many homes they can have within the proposed R4 zone. So that set me up for what I wanted to mention, which is that we are obligated to follow our ordinances. Granting exceptions or maybe through agreement or the like, those are not viable mechanisms to, to sidestep our zoning standards. So that being said, if for example, the, the planning commission was comfortable with the number of homes that are proposed here, with the amount of floodplain that's being proposed being removed, then it simply, I mean, let me put it this way. One way to be able to achieve that would be to do a text amendment to simply allow for more than 20 homes per acre in a zone like the R4 zone. But that would be the process that we would go through and need to go through would be to amend the zoning text, again, the concept of granting an exception or the like. That's, that's not an option for us. We're bound by our zoning law.
Okay.
Can I touch on one other thing quickly? Just, I think I can be quiet. And Mike, help me out if I'm wrong on this one. You asked for a waiver of some fees. I think you were talking about park impact fees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Park impact fees have to be paid by way of state statute and what we're obligated to do. We do not grant waivers of impact fees. Those are funds that have to be made whole. Occasionally, cities do, maybe for economic development purposes or something like that, pay impact fees for a developer. But that indeed is what would have to happen. In any event, should anything other than an applicant paying the requisite impact fees were to happen. So again, we, we can't just waive a fee like that. The, the manner in which those funds have to be collected and used is very explicitly prescribed in state law.
Okay. I guess I have two more things, my two other comments. Number one is, I think this is a beautiful development. I've been to Boise, I've walked their river trail. I've seen how this, I really think that this could really fit here, especially along a big road like Main Street, you can have high density. And then that dedicated, beautiful area behind it along the river. I think it's wonderful. I currently think that the timing is not great for this proposal because we're about to do a general plan review and update in the next, starting this summer, fall, Dave. And this area of the river bottoms is, is kind of a, is part of that critical part of that review. Like what are we going, what are the, what are our city's vision and plans for our river bottoms? And so if we start allowing these in this sensitive area of the river bottoms before that plan review, it just feels like it's just too soon to do. I know you've been working on this for a while, but we really do have that review of the general plan on the books. It's going to happen. And, and then we can see where, what the next steps would be for this area. So I've said kind of a couple of sides of this. I love it, but I think the timing isn't right.
I agree with Commissioner Warnick. The project is beautiful. The, the video, the Boise project, very appealing, some, somewhere that I would like to be. I think that the hurdles with the floodplain, 191 short for parking stalls, the, exceeding the density, I think those hurdles are, are too big to get over at this point.
I don't want to...
At least for me.
I don't want to, same thing, ditto. And the main thing for me is that parking would just be huge, especially if it's a park there, people are going to park and we're already short. I think that could get really messy, so.
Has anybody looked at the traffic impact of having a park and this project, that location and how it would pile up on the arrowhead traffic light? Do we know that at all?
They haven't submitted anything. We haven't looked at that specifically.
Any gut feel?
I don't think it will have huge impact on the arrowhead.
Chairman, by way of just a gut feel, I appreciate the way you asked that. Direct access onto a facility like Main Street, state route, generally speaking, that's what you'd be looking for when it comes to this intensity of uses. So if anything, I don't think traffic volume is a concern here at all. The idea of commingling maybe some, some park visitor traffic, park visitor parking needs with needs of the residents of the project. And at least as we're looking at here, that is kind of the concept, that some of the, the parking, and again, I'll let the applicants correct me if I'm, I'm getting this wrong, but, uh, the idea being that some of these parking spaces would somehow be made available for park patrons, trailhead patrons to use. At least in concept, the idea is that there's some likelihood that, that the trail and park use would, would be complementary to the times of the day when the demand for residential parking is the highest, which is usually late evening to really early morning. That is the, the idea behind how that could work. That is the, the idea behind how that could work.
But are there, is there designated parking just for the park or the city access? Or is that just a cross parking easement for the project?
What we discussed with parks was a cross parking easement, but if they needed more parking stalls, there's plenty of places either for them to add some additional parking or whatever.
Anybody else have any more comments? I, my comments follow along the line with my fellow commissioners here. So I, like Mike, don't need to add more to it. If there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to recommend the denial of the request.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll have a, a vote, just all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I show that the, the recommendation for denial of the application has been motioned and approved. The next step would be?
Just to clarify, is this based on the findings listed in the staff report?
Yes.
Or is there separate findings?
Do you want us to restate it?
No, just clarification.
Just for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just on the findings?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you're not as soft spoken as you're coming across tonight. I don't know, can everybody in the audience hear? No, right? It's pretty light, I think they have a.
That's a new one for me.
Maybe, it is, that's why.
Wow.
I feel like we have an issue, maybe mic wise, Mr. Born, are you looking in the back?
Travis.
Maybe?
Travis.
It's possible, the recording from last night too was really.
Yeah, we had some much of the recording.
I could use my, I could use my job site volume without the other words I use.
We're, I'm having a hard time hearing everybody, it sounds like all our magnification needs to be. Except you can probably all hear me.
Quick technical.
So just for a minute.
They are, but I don't think it's coming across, at least in here, is that right? It's pretty light, isn't it?
It's really hard to hear about here.
Okay.
None of the microphones are picking up. That's what I, I guess let's tear, tear it down and get a new building.
It's because we're all afraid to touch them.
So just for the clarification right here, the, the motion was made to decline the applicant, and all the commissioners voted in favor of declining the application. So my, my question to Dave was, the, the next step from here was it'll go to council with our recommendation for declining of the approval based on the staff's findings and conditions, and city council will hear that when?
The 16th of May, we'll send public notices for a public hearing with that body tomorrow.
Okay, do we want to wait for a minute for the volume to be worked out? Or do we want to move on to the next subject?
Let's speak.
I can speak up happily if that, if that moves along.
Is that better already?
It's already better already.
Yes.
Are you telling me to, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Are you telling me I should not be as loud now? The next item on the agenda tonight is, it hasn't marked as a public hearing, it's already had a public hearing, so we will not be having a public hearing on this tonight, is the Canyon Court Urban Project or Proposal. We'll turn time over to Dave to make a staff presentation.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We did discuss this in the commission's last meeting, it was continued from that meeting. As the chairman mentioned, we held a public hearing that night. I'll mention as well that since that meeting, your staff has had an opportunity to meet with some of the residents to talk specifically about concerns that we heard both in a neighborhood meeting that was held before the public hearing with the planning commission, and in the planning commission meeting itself about, as I would call it, area traffic, particularly though, traffic on 400 North. Some of the proposed traffic control measures for 400 North, different things like that. Appreciate the residents of the area giving us a really good opportunity to, to talk through and to think through what's proposed. Also appreciate our engineering department, they did a great job of, of both listening and offering their thoughts. What's proposed tonight is still somewhat preliminary in terms of how, for example, I'll touch on this in a moment, a roundabout would be designed, but there are some specific improvements that are contemplated with this project to improve both 400 North and Spanish Fork Parkway. 400 North at least is a state route, so you have to account for UDOT's involvement and oversight on approving different things. Last thought on, on that is kind of a recap of things that we talked about in the traffic meeting. Another unique thing about this particular property is the proximity from Spanish Fork Parkway, signalized intersection at 4th North, and the railroad tracks, which, in terms of some spacing considerations and the like as well, just give everybody some other things to think about also. But, that being said, I'm gonna go through things fairly quick. The applicant's given us a little bit of additional material from what we had to talk about a few weeks ago, the subject property is outlined and shaded here with the yellow color, the northeast corner of Spanish Fork Parkway and 400 North goes all the way from Spanish Fork Parkway over to the railroad tracks. About 15 acres, the majority of the property currently is zoned commercial two, while a portion of the property is, is zoned real residential also. This is an image that we talked about before that illustrates kind of the origin of the current zoning back with the original annexation. Thought was given as to the potential for some site out in this area to support some non-residential use. Similar consideration was given years even before that to what's become kind of the Spanish Fork Parkway US 6 intersection, and what's now the neighborhood Walmart site, and, and some other properties around there, probably closer to 30 years ago, were earmarked for non-residential development. And Spanish Fork City going back for decades has been somewhat forward looking by way of trying to make sure that consideration and thought's being given to ways to disperse different types of services throughout the community. And that, simply put, is really the origin behind the current zoning of the subject property, that commercial two, it's outlined right there, with the property to the north of it being designated for some kind of higher density residential development. This is the current general plan, which doesn't sync up entirely with our current zoning map, but at least as of late, has synced up with what we as city staff have felt made sense. This property line right here, these different parcels that are, are included south of that line down to 400 North, that's the area that was originally zoned commercial two when the properties were, when, when the area, I would say even, was annexed, everything that's now part of Legacy Farms and some other properties as well. We as staff realized some, somewhat soon after that zoning was assigned, that the depth that was set aside for non-residential development wasn't sufficient to be able to support what we had kind of envisioned or had hoped would land in the area, which is simply some kind of a grocery store. So, we did work with the applicants as the townhome project at the north was being approved. They scaled back the southern boundary of their property to make some additional property available to be included in, in a development to the south, which is where we really are today, where we have property under two different ownerships, everything south of this line, which is zone C2, and this parcel here, which, and I think this is a matter I certainly have opinion, but it to some degree may set the table for what is proposed now. A mixed use project certainly doesn't follow anything like what we see here, but again, the subject properties currently do have two different zoning districts. As proposed, this would be treated a little bit differently than a project with two distinct zoning districts. The proposal in fact, really relies on the concept of having a new zoning district altogether adopted, a mixed use zone. That would allow for the commingling of residential and non-residential uses in one development. This proposal indeed follows that concept with residential uses shown here on the north and east sides of the site, these six buildings would be exclusively residential, 16 units in each building, three story buildings. The structure right here, as proposed, conceivably would have non-residential uses on the first floor with some residential uses on floors two and three up above. I believe 16 additional uses there, excuse me, 16 different, I don't know. Once again, try it over again. 16 additional units in that building. What we're looking at here then is a, is a proposal that has probably something close to about 100,000 square feet of non-residential space with 112 homes. And the homes would, would be condominiums and either condominiums or apartments there in that building. Like I mentioned, what's been discussed with the planning commissioner over the course of the past year is the idea that a new zoning district would be created for the development. Part of the proposal tonight indeed involves draft language for what kind of called generically a mixed use zone. It's not an entirely new concept, for Spanish Fork, for a number of years, there's been a zoning district on the books called the Urban Village Commercial Zone. And some of the language from that zone has been incorporated into the draft that's before the commission tonight. That Urban Village Commercial Zone, for probably some reasons we can identify specifically tonight, never's been put to use. So, in my perspective, one opportunity that we have here is to take a step towards creating a zoning district that would allow some additional flexibility toward the city could consider projects like what we're looking at here. Back to just a couple of the things about that proposed zone, like I said, some elements certainly come from the existing Urban Village Commercial Zone. We've also taken some elements from our Residential 4 zone by way of architectural considerations and requirements for the residential side of, of what projects like this might include. But the, the idea really is fairly simple. It's to give an applicant an opportunity with, with some parameters that fall within some pretty broad, broad, maybe bright lines, to where they have an opportunity to propose something on a site specific level, therefore giving the planning commission and the city council to make decisions about whether or not they feel like it's the appropriate design, appropriate location, maybe appropriate composition of different uses and that type of a thing. And that, and all things related to the proposed zoning text, that's certainly on the table now, and I'd love to talk through as much as you'd like to or want to any things about that language as you'd like. That is something that conceivably could, you know, extend far beyond the boundaries of this project. It wouldn't per se immediately, because at this point in time, along with the proposed zoning language, it's only proposed that should that get adopted, that mixed use zone would pertain to this site, but once it's in the zoning code, other applicants would certainly have an opportunity to make application, have that same zone assigned to their property. And, that all being said, maybe I want to touch on one other thing. One of the concerns that's been discussed, both with the planning commission and in some informal work session conversations that we've had with the city council even, is what happens in this area here if indeed the developer is not able to come to terms with a grocer and to have them be a part of the development. It's a very, very real thing to consider and to think through. We don't have any mechanism at all to force, if you will, a private business entity to make an investment and to operate a business. We just simply cannot do that, we can't do that. A property owner like the applicant cannot do that. To some degree, the stars have to align for that to happen. We have been encouraged as city staff, as we've talked with folks at, at different levels, folks that operate primarily in Utah and the Intermountain West by way of having grocery stores, co-ops and the like that, that operate grocery businesses, we've talked with people that have more of a national presence as well about this site, and the feedback that we've received repeatedly has been that particularly when Spanish Fork Parkway crosses the railroad tracks and ties into State Route 51 to the north, they really view this lighted intersection here then as, as what's called a hard corner that they think is the kind of place that, that they want to be. That being said, just no way to guarantee it. So, I flipped forward to this image with the, which the applicant has given us since your meeting. One of the things that we talked about is a Plan B. And, I think this is something that the applicant's brought forth, both because it's been discussed, but also really as a way to, and I will certainly let him speak for himself on this, but I think also as a way to try to help us as city staff, appointed and elected officials, get comfortable with the notion that if for some reason in 2026, '27, '28, 2030, a grocer has not committed and, you know, maybe began construction and operation on that site, that they won't come back and simply ask for, you know, 20 units to the acre apartment kind of construction there, or something like that. What they've indicated here, which I understand is, you know, maybe a combination of office space and strip retail space and that sort of a thing. I really believe that that is space that is much easier to find tenants for and businesses that will operate in. A lot easier to lease that kind of space, a lot easier to justify its construction and that sort of a thing, so not only do I appreciate this as a way of, of maybe further tying any, any property owner's hands here from making a legitimate request of the city to consider more than 112 residential units on the site, but also I think there's something very viable even in just this, this conceptual kind of layout that they've shown here as an alternate to having a grocer on the site. If I recall correctly, this is one of the things that the commissioners that were with us in the last meeting wanted to see, kind of, maybe embellished or clarified for tonight's meeting, so I appreciate the applicant putting that together. I certainly want to leave some time for him to, to add his thoughts, so maybe just in summary, once again, a handful of different moving parts. And, one of the reasons that we've been anxious here as of late to get this in front of the planning commission is that there still would be some work that needs to be done. If you and then the council ultimately feel like this is what you want to see happen here, really the, the final step that would be taken, should for example, tonight, you let's say recommend the approval of the proposed zoning language, proposed map amendment, and this is a proposed development, the council concurs with that, then the idea would be that even after that, a development agreement would be drafted, and that really would be the, the final memorialization of the different conversations that have been had, things like Plan A, Plan B, architectural considerations, and everything associated with what's been presented as we've talked with you and the city council as a way of both giving the applicant a very predictable path forward, and as much as, should they proceed in a manner that's consistent with the agreement, then subsequent approvals, you know, come, just as a matter of routine, day-to-day business, and likewise for the city. It's our way of making sure that you and the city council get what you see in these forums. Does that all make sense? I appreciate that, I appreciate, as we've talked before.
What's the process for creating the development agreement?
City attorney starts with a draft, probably goes to then the applicant's council for them to review. A lot of time gets spent fine tuning exhibits to the agreement. And, once that draft is ready for approval, it gets placed on a council agenda for them to approve. Mayor signs it, and we run with it.
Dave, could you scroll between the, the current proposal and Plan B? And back? So why is the, all the amenities going if the, the residential spaces are not?
The grocer's not?
So they're, they're getting rid of all the amenities that would be built in the first phase?
I'm gonna.
Question for the applicant, I guess.
Thank you, yes, yeah.
So are you also proposing that there be a, in the development agreement that Joseph brought up, that you brought up, that there be a timeline that they have, you know, to. brought up, that you brought up, that there be a timeline that they have, you know, a certain date to-
I have the same question.
To either get a grocer in, committed, or else they then automatically goes to-
Yeah, what would trigger, how long till the Plan B is triggered?
I'm not trying to be flippant at all, but I'd love to get your thoughts on that. That's actually an idea-
Sounds really flippant.
That-
Last meeting, last meeting when you guys talked about three years. I just finished watching last meeting and you guys talked about three years and that just seems too short to me. I personally think, I appreciate that our developer says that he's super confident that three years is not going to go by without for sure getting a grocer, but-
I don't think he said that. Did you say that?
Yeah, yeah, he totally said that he was confident that-
Did he guarantee it?
No, but he said-
Confident?
He said he was very confident. He didn't think three years was going to go by. At least that's what I heard on the recording.
I believe you.
Well, if in three years it was changing to pickleball courts instead of other retail space, that might be okay.
Oh, a dedicated park?
And if I, maybe can I just add, whatever did?
Go right ahead.
Maybe all that I have to add to that conversation, a couple of things, I guess. Frankly, if you want to talk about maybe an amount of time that has to pass before you'd consider or would want the agreement to contemplate foregoing what I think really for the neighborhood and the community could be the best option, which is a fifty to sixty thousand square foot grocery-type user there.
Right.
Three years is not long.
Right.
It isn't.
To me, yeah, to me, five sounds like the least amount.
So anyway, that's-
Five to what date? Five years to what? I was thinking-
After approval.
Groundbreak, but-
You're thinking till groundbreaking?
Potential groundbreak, but we can talk about it.
The other thought that I have, and this would maybe just be my preference in terms of how something ultimately was worded, but it may be a minimum of X years needs to pass before anything but Plan A could be considered, not like an automatic at that point that that happens, but just minimum time before anything but Plan A.
And then would Plan B be just triggered like, or would it come back before the planning commission after that, whatever amount of years goes by?
I don't know that that needs to be, yeah.
We don't want to be capricious, but-
Yeah, I think either option could work. I think there's some value in being as explicit as you're comfortable being now or as definitive now versus leaving something like that for a future commission to consider. For example, might be one or two of you that would still be here in five years, but for the most part, you will have run your course. As commissioners, you will have run your courses, commissioners.
Dave, one question on the proposed zoning change. That Urban Village, I don't know what we're calling that.
Mixed use.
Mixed use. You said that'd be setting it up for future uses, but each one, since it is a new zone, each one of those future uses would have to come before us, before the commission, right?
When you say uses, you're talking about locations.
Right, each and the locations, yes.
That is exactly true, yes.
So it's not like somebody could just take advantage of that, but still have to come and apply for it.
No.
So it'd just be another tool to use in case another location similar to this came up.
But not necessarily to us, if it's a permitted use in the MU zone, correct?
But that's what does exist.
But it'll go to the city, but not necessarily us.
But nowhere on our current zoning map do we have that called out now. So it would have to come before the commission.
Unless we designate MU, which comes with permitted uses and conditional uses, and then it would only come back before us if it was a conditional use or they wanted a rezone to get a different use.
Right.
But if it's a permitted use, I think it'd go straight to staff.
Which is great, you're talking about-
Which is what I'm trying to clarify. If we grant, if we do rezone it to MU, is that, I thought that was your question.
You're talking about two different things.
I believe so.
You're talking about this site and you're right. Once this is zoned, then in as much as things are permitted here, that's an administrative act.
Right. Which would apply to Sean's question about Plan B.
I think Chairman Mitchell's talking about before these rules would be employed anyplace else in town, we'd have to go through that zone change mechanism, so.
That is a good point. For your question about option B, we'd be approving that section where the grocer would go as an MU. So if they fell within that criteria, it would not come through us.
So just a clarification for me, what Todd was talking about with this illustration of Plan B, is Plan B intending to get rid of the amenities and that mixed-use building? I mean, this is all of a sudden, you know, showing, you know, this is where the pickleball courts and stuff are, and then the other building here in Plan A, but B doesn't show that.
Can you go back to Plan A real fast?
Pretty easy. Right?
We gotta give the wand of power tutorial.
I didn't get the red dog, okay? I was gonna follow the bouncing ball.
Can you state your name again?
Corey Anderson.
Calling the applicant up and Corey's the applicant.
No, that, when he did the Plan B, which that-
Right.
I mean, this was like hurry and put something together, these guys want to see what Plan B is gonna be. So don't look at anything over here. Like, that's all the same as what's-
We'd be looking at those six buildings.
Nothing, nothing west of those four commercial pads and the residential is going to change.
Right.
For Plan B.
I just wanted that clear.
Plan B is just Lot One, where the grocery store is laid out, what could possibly go in there, and that's what Plan B is. And that, I mean, that's really rough.
Corey, can I ask you a question on the, I have a question on here. Tell us about what the red lines mean.
This is just a walking path.
Oh, okay, because that's what I was thinking and I wanted to give you the feedback. Thank you for, thank you for making that clear. It looks like it would be well-defined because really, what a great walking community this is proposed.
I think so. I think one of the meetings we had, that was one of these, as a result of, I want to think you guys wanted to see was the walkability from like, now which button is it? From person living here to get up to the grocery store, and so this is just showing that walk, the walkability of the project.
Awesome.
So no, the landscaping is not going to change. And that will be put in when we build our residential units, the landscaping.
And that center building there will remain a part of Plan B.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Do you-
That one will remain in Plan B as well, right?
Yep.
Do you project just going, I mean, based on, okay, is mine gonna work? I don't think so. But do you propose developing all of that side and then leaving the left side open until?
Left side meaning the grocery store?
Yeah.
So our plan to, right now, is these, the commercial lots, because if you look at, this is the, we have the subdivision, there's, so that's the subdivision that we're bringing forth right now. So lots one through six are for sale. And so we will, we will look to market and sell, you know, three, four and six, we've got buyers interested in those, to build something like that that you see. So I forgot your question now.
Phasing.
Yeah.
But you forgot the question too.
What's the phasing, right, yeah. What's the phasing meant to be? So you're, what you're wanting to do is sell these lots and show them the plan of general what is planned there.
Yes. So the-
Is it accurate, you're building seven though? Lot seven? I think that's Sean's question.
Your plan is to develop just Lot Seven?
We'll develop the whole site with utilities and everything going through the whole site in one phase. We will then continue over and improve all of Lot Seven and start-
With the condos.
With the condos. We do have an interested party in one of these to build with some users, whoops.
Does Lot Seven include the mixed-use residential retail building?
No, that's Lot Two. My pointer's not working.
And does Lot Seven include the amenities?
With kind of a cross easement for the, with some picnic tables, some stuff that other customers for the retail use could come over there and use that, but it will be owned by the residential Lot Seven with a management agreement with the rest of the commercial.
So not a city park, but would be used-
Private.
As, in the same way with the public.
Correct.
Very good.
If only the groceries, I'm comfortable with having a Plan A with a five-year backstop. I'm not sure what I'm comfortable with with Plan B, but I am, that's what I'm comfortable with.
I don't like.
I like it. Any other comments?
I like the five-year too.
Okay. So Joseph brought the comment of what our opinions would be of when that lot starts in development. I mean, plans can, for something like that, can take well over a year. Joseph brought groundbreaking. Anybody have any comments or want to have a discussion on that?
I'm okay with Dave's idea too, just it can't be anything else for X number of years. Simple as well. We'll go with that. I'm open to Todd's idea, which was my original idea as well.
I figured you'd like your idea.
Which is what?
Just the timing being the ground break.
Yep.
I'm open.
How's that sound to you, Corey?
I'm fine. Like I say, I'm confident that we're gonna get a user-
Put up a lot in the corner and keep coming back every night.
Yeah, this has been fun.
Hey, we've got to know you.
No, I'm still confident we're gonna get some sort of grocery store. It may not be a sixty thousand square foot, I don't know, but I'm confident that we're gonna be able to get somebody in there to, I mean, from the market studies that we're doing, from the feedback we're getting from grocery stores, it's a great location. And I think you guys see that, and I think the staff sees that, and I think the end-users are seeing this. And so I'm, five years, whatever.
My other person, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? My other thought is, I don't really love the design for Plan B as just more of the same kind of just commercial. I would, listening to the last meeting, I think it would be nice to have something substantial anchored there, even if it was medical facilities or, I don't know what else, but it just feels like it needs to be a substantial anchor, if that makes any sense. Does anybody have any thoughts about that?
I think that we try to stay with what our original thoughts are on that for a grocery store in this, in this location because of the population around it. And it is a great site for that. If there's a Plan B, I'm not very comfortable with describing exactly, this is a concept of what Plan B may be, not what it will be. And so if the grocery store doesn't come and someone comes in with a proposal that makes sense, then I would be okay, you know, then whoever is responsible for okaying that, Plan B would make the decision on how that would be. And so what we're looking at there now may or may not be what Plan B would look like. Right?
Would Plan B come to the planning commission?
It would have to.
That's what, because it's approved zone and so, yeah.
Yeah, but it's Lot One right now. We're gonna record it as Lot One. If you go to Plan B, that's gonna be divided up into four different lots, so we're gonna have to come back to Plan Commission.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless the development agreement includes Exhibit B, which is Plan B, as an approved layout of uses, if Plan A, which would be Exhibit A in the development agreement, doesn't come to fruition within five years of, you know, the effective date of the development agreement, that could easily be written that way and he wouldn't, they wouldn't have to come back and it would be, it would be the government, in my opinion, being maybe a little bit more thoughtful and right now granting and giving them more a path, more of a path forward if the grocery store doesn't come to fruition.
I would, to protect the city, I wouldn't do that. Because a grocery store is going to buy this for a lot cheaper than what I could sell different paths for. Somebody could come in and buy that. Plan B is in the development agreement and say, I'm gonna wait five years, then I'm gonna double my money and go to the commercial paths.
True.
You could do that either way. You can wait five years either way.
Yeah. But selfishly, as I'm going to be probably building one of those commercial pads, I want a grocery store there. So, I mean, just something to think about.
It seems to me as well that if, what we're agreeing upon on the east side of this property is built, it would be even more of an incentive to have a grocery store come in and show that not only is the population there, but this is going to be a site that would be, it would be something that could enhance their viability, you know? Not just, not just grocery-wise, but, you know, it's going to attract people there that, you know, may stop for a sandwich and go and get your groceries while you're there or something like that. So I think, I think the plan works. I hope that the grocery store goes in and that we, that we get the benefit from that. That's my idea.
My only thoughts are, I'm in favor of the zone, zoning creation to the MU over Kong. I've liked, I like the project. It's a good place for, I'm much for Plan A over Plan B. I trust the city will put whatever we need in that development agreement to protect the city's interest and the community's interest on that. I do, the only question I have is there's the condition of number four about the roundabouts and the entrances. Has the applicant reviewed all that? Is there a bail on the same page, what needs to happen there? Do you want me to read it while you're-
Yeah, what's for?
Can you lead me to it, please?
It says that the improvements along Fort North that were discussed by the engineering department, so it doesn't really outline what those are.
Gotcha.
With regards to the design for the island and roundabouts being incorporated into the plans, and the developer constructed those improvements, so that'd be on your bill, that that'd be being built. So since it doesn't define it, and we'll be making a motion based on those findings and conditions, I just wanted to get your comment that you know what those are and you're in agreement.
I haven't, that was my original thought, that that was gonna be ours. So we are fine with the roundabout? I haven't heard a feedback from the committee.
Yeah, and I base that off of Jeremy's design that he submitted for review.
Yeah, I'm fine.
We heard a report about the numbers and it sounds, the data, it sounds like the data shows that the roundabout does work.
Yeah, it shows that it's the best solution for that intersection, functions well.
Good. I'm gonna step way back because maybe I forgot, but we're within our parking guidelines on this too, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that's something that, relative to the proposed zoning language, just we're talking about, Brandon just reminded me of that. As proposed with the mixed-use zone, it would give an applicant the opportunity to have a cross-parking easement and to count some residential parking conceivably towards commercial parking requirements, vice versa. And there is a limit. And Mr. Snyder, I'll let you help me on exactly how much of that can happen. Up to thirty percent. Just reminded me of an applicant's required parking, which for the residential part, the way the draft mixed-use zone is written, is two-point-five spaces per unit with garages available for sixty percent of the units, identical to what we have, for example, in the R4 zone. But it does afford that opportunity as well for- does afford that opportunity as well for the applicant to get credit for their parking in the development. It's a pretty well-accepted practice when you have uses that are as distinct as these included in this kind of proximity. Peak parking demand for residential units, for residential neighborhoods, particularly multifamily ones, usually is after 10 o'clock, and goes through to maybe 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock AM. For the most part, professional office uses, retail uses, and things like that complement it perfectly. So that's, that's the idea. It also then invokes the need for there to be a management mechanism of some type. Usually there's something, it's akin to a homeowners association, some kind of a deck agreement. It'd be more likely called in a, a non-residential setting that spells out what owners are responsible to maintain what, and how those things, those things happen. We haven't gotten totally in the weeds yet, but for example, it's conceivable that the, kind of, the park space in the project could be set up that way to where different owners in the site contribute towards its maintenance and that type of a thing, or not. But again, some weeds that we haven't gotten totally into, but in that way, as proposed, the development conforms to the proposed language. Does that make sense? Yep. On the parking. Maybe to touch on one or two other things about the proposed language. We talked about what I, I took as phasing, and as was the case with, or is still the case with the, the urban village commercial zone, there is a requirement to have some non-residential space constructed commiserately with residential development.
It's E3. This is one of my concerns. It's why I don't actually like the mixed-use zone for this particular project, but because of I8 in the mixed-use zone code, it works, which is the development agreement acts as a, almost like a trump card for the rest of it. E3 requires 30%, if there is residential component, it requires only at least 30% of the remaining, of the entirety of the project be commercial, which in this case is not what we want. So because of the development agreement, it limits the amount of residential. You see, and E3 is my concern, but it's not a concern because of the development agreement. It says projects with a residential component will be, will be required to have at least 30% of the project gross total building square footage dedicated to commercial or office uses, and we want the residential that shown to be limited to that amount of residential and the rest to be commercial, which the development agreement can provide. And that, and so that's why I'm okay with it.
I appreciate that. So Bo, you're saying two rules come into play?
Yeah, that, that make it okay, and then, but the only way it works is if the development agreement applies to the entire 15 acres, it can't be a single lot, that will not work.
Thank you, and maybe just to kind of clarify one other thing about, really, I think from staff's perspective, the more important part of the idea that as a project is built, some non-residential development has to happen throughout the life of the project, it's simply so that you don't get all residential. I could reference the Riverwoods in Provo, they set aside a lot of space way back when for a grocery store there, and the market didn't support it, and they had similar provisions in place, but didn't ultimately get exactly what they wanted. Guess they let the residential part develop entirely without giving some consideration to other things, so. The concern simply being that you don't get all residential and not.
70% residential for the rest of the project? Which is, which would be the case.
Or conceivably 100% residential and everything else is vacant.
Yeah, which, which could be the case if the development agreement doesn't address it, and so this is probably a good time for me to confirm with staff that the development agreement would address that of the 15-acre project, it's limited to the amount of residential shown, and the rest will be conform, be non-residential, compliant with the MU zone. And if that's the case, I'm good with it.
Yeah, and to clarify, Exhibit B maybe here, Plan B, and Exhibit A, Plan A, those are worth a whole lot of narrative, I think, in our opinion, so it's thou shall do this, or this, and that's the idea.
And that's part of the development agreement, so we don't need to add a condition saying lot one may not be subdivided for five years, because there needs to be more, there needs to be more in it, and it's an exhibit that's part of the development agreement, right?
I appreciate though, I mean, if the, if the commission's thinking, hey, we need to stick with Plan A for five years at a minimum.
That's just me.
I think that's what, the council, I think, would appreciate understanding how the commission feels about that, giving them maybe at least a starting point to think about.
So we can add it to the condition, but it, or we just tell, we just give you the direction and saying?
Add it as a condition of your motion, or the motion that happens.
Right, okay.
And then Joseph, would your comments be more applicable to this motion or to the Title 15 one? We're gonna hear next.
This one.
This one.
Not the next, not the Title 15.
And do we need to, I mean, I don't know, does order matter? Do we need to recommend on the title amendments before we approve, approve a mixed-use zone before the mixed-use zone is recommended, meaning it'll all go to the city council? So it doesn't really matter?
I think with city council, we probably would prefer the text amendment first, then the map amendment, then the project approval. So that'd be, maybe a good order for the commission to follow.
Cory, do you have, did anyone else, Cory, we don't have him, get out of the hall seat?
I think the only thing that I was gonna add, the whole reason we, to remind you, Plan B was just to ensure that we don't have residential and, in this project. That's the whole reason we started with this Plan B.
Residential in lot one.
Yeah, throughout the whole, throughout the project.
Oh, gotcha.
So yes, I'm confident with limiting it in the operating, or in the development agreement to 106 units for this site. You know, the one thing I do want to ask is that we, we don't limit that to the, the amount of square footage that's actually done in the commercial, let us start on the residential and, and then the commercial to follow, but limiting the amount that we're not gonna come back and ask for more residential units if the grocery store doesn't come in or, you know, whatever. So I'm totally comfortable with all of that, so.
Does anybody have, from the commission, any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Some we're not doing in public hearing?
No. You already, you did one last. There's a last one. Does, any more discussion on that?
Point to personal privilege, can I address? Not on this subject, but on, specifically on this subject or anything, but just to ask a question to the council.
Sure, I'll state your name and your question.
So my name's Edith Hill. The applicant had an opportunity to address other questions that the council had, or that the commission had from last meeting, but the public did not. So my only question is, is can we have a time? I understand that we can't have a public hearing without posting a public hearing, but I would love for other folks to be able to address this second piece as well, in the personal hearing.
The second piece being the Plan B.
Plan B. Because we didn't have opportunity to address Plan B. We only had a opportunity to address the original plan. Thank you.
That's a good question, and we should point out that when it comes before the city council, there will be another public hearing, but we held a public hearing last month for this, so we won't hold one again this time. However, as it comes before the city council, there will be a public hearing.
Now, so address for just a second?
I'm not gonna keep opening up, I'm sorry. That's, that ship's sailed. So, anybody on the commission, any other comments or discussion? Okay, that being said, I would entertain a motion if anyone has one to make. Give it a shot.
Should I give it a shot? I move that we, oh, let me pull this up. Okay. I move that we recommend to the city council the proposed zone change and preliminary plat based on finding the staff's findings and conditions with the additional condition that lot one may not be subdivided for five years.
Subdivided?
Was there another way you'd say it?
Grocery, right? It would need to be a gro, it can only be a grocery store with it for the five years from the effective, effective date of the development agreement, is that?
That's what I understood, yes.
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 Not subdivided.
Are we allowed to do that legally, or is it better to say subdivided?
Development agreement can.
Or you can just indicate option B is not an option until five years.
Or nothing but Plan A.
For five years until Plan B, and then Plan B.
With the additional condition that, that something other than a grocery store will not be considered. For a period of five years, until the end of a period of five years. Is that?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I, the motion is passed, the commission, it'll go before the council now, which will be a public hearing, you're all invited to attend that. That would be opposed, I'm sure, out for public to, to be able to come and state their opinions.
On Title 15.
But we're gonna hear Title 15.
With that, please, yes.
That's our next topic.
It is, yeah, just to make sure.
They may be able to address it. We'll have a public hearing on that, it does slightly touch this topic. It's, it's more general, but it is applicable to this topic.
Certainly germane, yeah.
But would it have been better if we had approved the, approved that before with the other ones?
Thinking about it.
You'll reverse it when you go to the city council?
I think we will, yeah.
That one needs to be a public hearing though, so we were, we just, we had to open up a public hearing, we hear all that, and then go through, so we close that one, and then we'll move on to the next topic. If I have that order right. Our next topic is the Title 15 amendment. I've lost my agenda, but it's here somewhere.
Yeah, certainly, everything that I had to offer was, was kind of commingled with the previous discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but don't have anything more to add.
Okay. There's any, based on Joseph and Dave's exchange last time, does anybody have anything to ask Dave while he's up here, or should we open up a public hearing? Okay, thank you, Dave. Now, we'll open this meeting up, public hearing. Same conditions as I stated, first, you'll, anybody wants to come speak, please state your name, you've got three minutes to state your questions, concerns, we'll take notes. If you want to tie those comments into Title 15 in general and the last topic specific, that's fine too, so.
My name's Michael Tutton. I live next to the proposed project that was just approved, but my question specifically was about the Title 15 amendments, and that we don't really have this type of zoning currently, so I was wondering what the proposal would be for those commercial properties and their hours of operation. Thank you.
Edith Hill, I live very close to that property as well. Based on that, the thought of building commercial property versus the timeframe of building residential, is there a timeframe that the applicants, and not in just in this, not in general for this one, but anyone that have, with this change, is there a, a percentage that they have to build out residential versus the commercial? Meaning, do they have to build out three buildings of commercial and then have two buildings of, I mean, three buildings of residential and then two buildings of commercial? Because it gives the opportunity for the applicant or the builder to build out all the residential and let all the other areas stay empty until they find a buyer, but that's also a roll of the dice depending on market trends and whatnot. Thank you.
Others, I believe there's others that raised their hands, if you'd like to come forward, that's great.
My name is Andrew Kelly, I live in Legacy Farms neighborhood. I'm not originally from this area or this country, actually, so my opinions I recognize may be a little different to others, but it, it's in, in reference to, actually, these photographs that you see on the wall. My main thing in, in talking about this zone type is, I think these photographs are here because that's some of the most beautiful scenes in Alph City. That's why they're here, right? What's missing there, that would probably be in a similar edifice in Provo, would be the Provo City Center Temple, the beautiful center street. So my point is, and he's not here, but I, I like this body. You guys discussed a lot of things that I don't hear so much about in city council, and I've admonished them to pay a little bit more attention, maybe they are, but John is the only person I ever hear talk about a beautiful development, the, you know, not making cookie cutter. I was just back overseas visiting family, and I came back and I was like, man, we really have a lot of Dwight Schrute beige buildings everywhere in the city. Like I hadn't really noticed it before, without any nice facades and Canyon Creek, you know, I thought that was great, and I come back and I was like, man, this is just one big huge strip mall, it's not very pretty. And I'm for density. If you're talking about this commercial out front of, you know, our neighborhood, my only issue with that is, is way too much parking. I know you're obsessed with parking, and I know, I know we live in Utah, we don't have transit, we're decades behind in lots of things that the rest of the world does not, like roundabouts, we're 100 years behind, you know, we're just getting them, I get it. I get where I live, and I feel very blessed to live here, but man, imagine if we had a big food hall, you know, actual, look up the development where we used to live in Georgia, it's called the Avalon in Alpharetta, that's what Canyon Creek should be, and that's what this should be a mini version of. And every mixed-use, just make, I mean, I don't know if the builders get a discount on the Dwight Schrute beige color that's everywhere? Maybe they do, and I respect, you know, their ability to, to do business here, and, but when I have family and friends come here, we spend all our time in Provo. Because that's where all the good restaurants are, that's where the beauty is, I have family that are not members of the church, that they want to take photos everywhere, the only photo they take when they're at my house is of the backyard of that, because it's magnificent. So any of these zone changes we're doing, let's focus on that, what, because what God put here is pretty amazing. What we're doing is, eh, you know, and being obsessed with parking because we have to drive everywhere, I mean, that's really, that's really 1980s kind of thinking. Let's, you know, this city, the city to me is very progressive and very much wanting to do these things. Look at all the trails and walkability that we're creating, but the developers, they seem like they're kind of stuck in the 1980s, that everything has to be a drive-through and just oceans of hot parking with no covers over it, very little pedestrian crossings, no pedestrian bridges anywhere, we should have one over six, we should have one over Canyon Creek Parkway. Anyway, I told you that I'm a little bit off in another land, but that's just what I see that we should really focus on. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close public hearing. Any comments, we want to address some of the questions?
Permitted uses. So what I have here on the proposed for permitted uses is, there's 10 here that are permitted uses, childcare centers, financial institutions, health, fitness, and recreation facilities, instructional studios, residential multifamily, museums, offices, personal service businesses, restaurants, retail uses. And then items that are in B, uses subject to conditions, so they have to come and, and get approval, home occ- home occupations, master plan developments, oh, is it eight o'clock? Um, subdivision model home complexes, temporary office or construction trailers, and then uses that are subject to conditional use permits are wireless communication facilities on existing structures with internet to make them stealth facilities which are not noticeable to degree greater than, um, the structure to which it's attached, and new, new stuff facilities. Dave, is that, that's our permitted uses?
That's what's proposed, and maybe I would just add that, uh, there are many, many different things that would fit under, for example, a retail use umbrella, be the same with an office use or personal service business, so I don't think this intends at all to suggest that there are just ten types of, of things that could happen, or, you know, uh, that number of different ways to conduct business, or, you know, to have commerce occur in that type of a thing, um, does that make sense?
Sha- Shauna mentioned medical office earlier, I took note of it, because I would be in favor of that use, and is health facilities, is that, would, would that, would that be broad enough to include a doctor's office?
Yeah, so, uh, any kind of medical office, dentist, chiropractor, that would be personal service business.
Okay, perfect.
Are categorized that way, the health, fitness, and recreation, that's more of a VASA, or the like, uh, and I'll tell you what, we're completely open, by the way, to suggestions for this, generally speaking, um, you're trying with projects like this, I believe, to cater to neighborhood level services, um, and then, of course, to serve the actual residents that live in the project itself with a hundred and twelve homes, that's not enough to keep any business afloat, you know, so certainly looking beyond the boundaries of this project, um, to help a business be viable, but, uh, typically not looking well beyond, uh, a neighborhood kind of a, maybe footprint.
But does that address the hours of operation question we have from Mr. Todd?
That doesn't, I appreciate somebody asking that, um, I, unless I missed something, today in our commercial downtown zone, we have a restriction on hours of operation for uses that are identified as permitted uses in that zone, we used to have a limit on the hours of operation for our commercial one zone as well, uh, I think it was six or seven years ago now that, that, that language was removed, I'd been more recently than that, um, I thought maybe we had something like that as well in the urban village commercial zone, didn't pick that up just by way of doing a couple of searches, uh, which I mentioned by way of context, simply, um, but what's proposed here tonight does not propose to have any limit on hours of operation.
Does hours of operation refer to the, like, let's say it's a grocer, and they're open, you know, we could have one that's open twenty-four hours, we could have one that closes at ten, but what about the restocking effort, because grocers receive their trucks in the middle of the night to restock, um, so that, that could actually be an increase of noise for those that are to the back of that building as unloading is going on, that wouldn't restrict that, would it?
But our sound ordinance would.
The sound ordinance.
Our sound ordinance would. But, uh, the way that I'm familiar with the few communities where I've been involved with that being regulated, it is when they're open for business, that's, that's the, how you would, uh, define compliance with hours of operation.
And if they're receiving a shipment, they're open for business?
If they're receiving a shipment, I, I would say, for example...
To Todd's point, that means they're open for business.
Well, um, I think, as much as we don't define it, you can help us maybe do that, but generally speaking...
I just did.
Businesses would take, uh, uh, for example, a grocer, I know oftentimes they'll take shipments middle of the night, and frankly, a lot of times that's when we want them to be restocking and receiving shipments, and, um, have that kind of traffic on site and so forth, you know, versus when, uh, you know, maybe there are more opportunities for that to be a conflict, but, um, both the concept of maybe incorporating some hours of operation limits, and how that gets defined, that's on the table, um, I will say that, uh, for example, for, let's say, a Walmart, to make a commitment to a site, being limited to certain hours of operation is a deal breaker for them, period.
And we want a grocery store, do we want to make rules that deter a grocery store?
Yeah, so, some would consider...
Why should we, who's the question was asked, I just want to make sure upfront in discussing it.
Yeah.
We also have a question on the percentage of commercial to be built in relation to the residential, I think Joseph touched on this earlier, um, could we maybe have a, uh, an example or a clarification, just so we understand what that would be?
In, uh, Mr. Anderson, I think we might want to talk this one through, uh, we've talked about it, that is staff and the applicant quite a bit, and, um, what you just mentioned, I think, uh, I've heard before, and it's your concern that any commercial use be required before or consistent with the construction of, of, uh, some residential part of the project, so might be a point that we still haven't, uh, entirely come to an agreement on, but, um, as is the case, and I keep repeating it, doesn't necessarily matter, but, um, even back when the commercial urban village zone was conceived, maybe twenty-five years ago now, uh, it was important for the city to have, uh, some non-residential part of the project constructed in sync with whatever residential part was. So, what Commissioner Ernest referred to earlier, um, is a requirement for the project to build out by way of thirty percent of the square footage.
Don't panic.
This was planned, no big deal, so...
Wasn't planned, but...
One of us knows how to get the lights back on, he'll, maybe two of us.
It's a plan.
Good times due, Dave, you got it.
Right? Just a few bugs, no biggie. We need an expert to, uh, three nights, yeah, for three nights a month to reprogram automatic, powering down. Let's, let, Mr. Dilly get that, back to my train of thought, um, and to use an example, in order for, uh, Mr. Anderson to be able to build, uh, one of his buildings that is roughly, let's say, fifteen thousand square feet of residential space, he'd have to build, forty-five hundred square feet, thirty-five percent, I guess it'd be five thousand square feet, let's say, um, uh, square feet, give or take, of non-residential space as part of that same phase, does that make sense? Kind of butchered again, um, and it would have to maintain that minimum ratio throughout the life of the project, so, the kind of retail strip buildings that he's shown on the southern end of the project, next to, they're close to four hundred north, I understand those are designed to be about ten thousand square feet, so for every ten thousand square foot building he built there, he could build approximately thirty of his hundred and twelve residential units, and so forth, but not less than that with how the language reads today.
I believe that was addressed to your question, you just wanted to know what the ratio was, or if there was a mechanism in place for that.
Right.
The only thing you got to consider with that is, for instance, the ten row, my plan lays out a ten thousand square foot building, which, you know, that's a, a good use, and it was kind of to lay out the parking requirements, so to see the size of the building we could play there, for instance, a Chick-fil-A comes in there and buys, which they won't, but something like that comes in there and buys a lot, they only build a four thousand square foot, um, res- restaurant there, that kind of hinders the residential aspect of that, but, to the city, the Chick-fil-A there is going to bring in some revenue, which I think is the, kind of the idea behind this mixed use, uh, so that's the only thing that kind of worries me a little bit, is the actual end use for these lots, um, ten thousand, you know, that's when equate to so many residential units, um, and that's my fear, and I've been very open with this, with you guys and the council, is, you know, if, if we sell these lots, nobody builds, you know, then we're stuck holding this, so we'll get into that later, I guess, sounds like...
Might be a council thing, ultimately, you know, uh...
That, that's more the development agreement language that we were talking about.
Todd, that's what I think.
No, I mean, is part of Title 15 agreement?
This is part of Title 15.
I, I ate...
So, the recommendation by the city, and it was strongly encouraged by the DRCs, hence the recommendation before you tonight is to include that thirty percent ratio, and so it's not negotiable via the development agreement, so that's why Dave's saying the city council would love your opinion on it, um, but ultimately, that's something we'll continue the discussion with them.
The, wait, the code itself says it's, the, the entire zone is subject to, can be subject to a development agreement in I-8 of the code itself that we're approving.
Oh, good, quite a good way to throw that out there.
So, I'm just, I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned in what Brandon just said, that if, if E3 cannot be adjusted per the terms of a, of a development agreement, then I, I'm, I'm not loving our approval, our recommendation of approval just now, because it means that they could increase the amount of residential, correct, on the fifteen acres, then, more than what they've shown, per the code?
I think we both feel like they're two separate issues, um, the development agreement, in my view, is a really important way to make sure that what you see, the public sees through this process, and the council, and so forth, to make sure that that specific thing gets built, so that agreement would, would, uh, run beyond maybe even the life of one particular owner's involvement in the project, you know, it would succeed and go on with, with, uh, future parties that might be involved, um, but by way of the standards that have to get followed, that's, Title 15 is, is the base standard there, by way of a development agreement and different things that an applicant might proffer, or simply illustrate, you know, through an architectural design, conceptual landscape plan, or anything like that, that may, it, maybe it's not so much that they even go above this base requirement that can't be waived, can't grant exceptions to it, and that type of a thing.
So, I, is it accurate that if the development agreement is silent to an issue, that, and the property is zoned mixed use, then the default regulation is the mixed use zone, as long as the development agreement is silent, as it pertains to any particular issue? Because if that's the case, that's, that's the way it should be.
And historically, uh, when zoning's been changed, we presented specific development plans, and we haven't necessarily felt like it was necessary to have a development agreement to memorialize all aspects of that approval, and what the city could expect and should expect a developer to follow through on, uh, but in the absence of something like, like, for example, if this property were simply zoned mixed use, without having any, any particular development reviewed and considered, then I think what you're talking about would absolutely come into play, somebody proposes something that meets the, the base requirements articulated in the code, and it's an administrative approval, period. We haven't operated generally like that, though, of course, uh, we've been pretty particular about making sure that there's detail provided at the time of a zone change for some really important and particular reasons, um, whether there's a development agreement or not, we want to have a plan that, uh, everybody can rely on as being what gets built, but, last thing, I promise, this is a really unique situation, I think, new zoning text, um, a particularly unique type of development, um, six different opinions by way of planning commissioners, five on the council, um, an applicant that's, that's helping us kind of cut our teeth, um, in a real way, on the development, um, I think a development agreement simply is a, is a really helpful tool to use here, to make sure that once we have input from everybody, um, and have a plan out there, we can use that, maybe it's our, our suspenders to go with the belt to make sure that what has been talked about gets built, even something as simple as saying no more than a hundred and twelve residential units in the agreement, that kind of thing.
I think you said you're agreeing with what I said, that as long as the development, if the development agreement is silent to a particular issue such as the number of residences, then the MU zone would, would, would be the compliance mechanism, correct?
The only exception would be if, uh, there still is a development proposal that, um, has some specific detail, we would hold somebody to the development, a detail of the development proposal, like a preliminary plat or a site plan, whether there's commiserate detail in a development agreement, that's what I was trying to say.
It specifies what's in it, so it's not silent, so then that would be...
Yeah, it might be silent in text of a development agreement, but if we have some other mechanism that we've used to say, this is what we expect the developer to do, we would still use that as the measuring stick or whatever.
Even better.
You're saying the same, you're saying the same thing.
Yeah, but actually, his is better.
I sure think so.
He's saying, I'm right, and then he added another layer of it, of, of a compliance mechanism.
They're both right.
Great.
Okay, other comments? Um, if I didn't close it earlier, because that discussion threw me off, we've closed public hearing, um, and opened discussion.
You mean continued discussion?
Continued discussion, don't be careful, it's continued.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Any, any comments? I would look for a, a motion on whether or not they're on this topic.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the Title 15 amendments as proposed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, I have a motion, a second, uh, we'll vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I hear that passes, the motion passes, and will now be going towards the city council, where it will be presented in a different order, hopefully.
The agenda will be set up a little bit differently, thank you, and we, we're anticipating May sixteenth for that one, as with the, what we talked about earlier tonight, so...
Will there be any draft of the development agreement for the council to review?
I'll meet with the city attorney Monday and talk about that, we've talked with the applicant a little bit about trying to get a draft going, um, I think that'd be helpful, even if it's...
I think it'd be very important for them to have that.
An outline, but, yes, well, I'm hesitant to commit on behalf of our attorney, but...
Okay. Thank you. Um, the next topic on the agenda is the annexation of Thirty-Eighth North and eleven-hundred West.
Do you need a brief break before you're ready to...
I have, be a great idea, thank you, we will take a five-minute recess. Approximately.
Joseph, there comes up for some reason, or...
I just threw my, just threw my pants.
It says resting, it says resting, just...
My resting thumb face.
So, this is kind of showing, uh, the location, here's the new Sun Rock facility.
This is SR seventy-seven, thirty-eight hundred north in Spanish Fork, four hundred south in Springville, um, what we have, it's hard to see, uh, we don't have it, but the property, or the annexation is made up of multiple properties, and so if you've had a chance to look at the staff report, um, we updated it this morning, uh, after the DRC, um, review, and so we do have, um, some findings that are recommended, um, for the approval of the annexation, and we'd have, uh, majority of the property upon annexation would be zoned I-1 light industrial, and then we do have two parcels, um, it's this south parcel owned by Shepsfield LLC, and then we have the Blunks home here, um, those two properties would be zoned rural residential upon annexation. Um, any questions for staff at this time?
Those two property owners have requested that?
Uh, yes.
So, they're, they're aware of everything that's going on, they're, then they requested to remain, or to be brought in the city and remain RR?
Yes, so, uh, the Sheps have been very clear as far as the uses they'd like to continue, um, and then the Blunks, um, we've reached out to them today just to confirm, and we do have some time before the city council... And then the Blunks, we've reached out to them today just to confirm, and we do have some time before the city council meeting. Their initial request was to be rural residential since that is their residence. My understanding is the home may be listed for sale at the moment, and so we just wanted to reach out to confirm to see if they would prefer an I one or the RR.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon?
Thank you.
Do we have any of the, the aligned owners or applicants to come and address us?
Hi, my name's Jared Morgan, I represent two of the four parcels. I'm with GWC Capital, we're a client company, and we're the developer throughout the industrial park area. And so, yeah, the Blunk home is currently for sale and is listed light industrial on the for sale sign. And so, I'm assuming that that's their assumption. But, yeah, we've, we've brought this a few times to, to DRC, and I think that we're in a good place now with the neighboring property owners. And soon you'll, you'll see an additional annexation to the north that we'll be bringing as well, all targeted as light industrial for this, for this area, so. Yeah, have appreciated all the work with staff, and I think we're in a good trajectory here, so.
Thank you.
Other question for Brandon? Are all the property owners affected by this, in, in favor of it and in favor of the zoning designation that you're proposing with the staff report?
This is why we should have Kimberly come for annexation specifically. She's a great asset as far as handling and processing these. She reminded us this morning that in our last correspondence with the Blunks, that the commitment was the rural residential, so that's, as the applicant indicated when we heard that it was for sale. We did make the effort to reach out to see if, if I one is what they prefer at this point.
But we're not sure, we don't know?
We will know before the city council meeting.
Okay.
But our topic tonight states it is to remain RR.
Yes, and that was to honor our last correspondence.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that is clear, but unless you want to modify that in a.
Personally, I, I'm okay with, because industrial is consistent with the general plan, correct?
Correct.
I'm okay with whatever the landowner desires.
Right.
Rural residential or light industrial, not commercial.
But Brandon.
Either of those two.
Brandon, yeah, Brandon, the staff can have time before council to clarify that and present it that way to them.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Is there anything we're missing, any commentations?
Sounds pretty straightforward to me.
Seems straightforward.
Doesn't create an island, it falls in there, I think we talked about, but seems pretty straightforward. With that in mind, I hear a motion on the topic.
I move that the proposed annexation be recommended for the approval with I one and RR zoning based on staff's finding and conditions.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself for the next two.
Next two.
I just get some exercise up, up and down.
So the next topic is the West Ridge Business Park.
This is just directly to the east of the annexation area we're looking at, not adjacent, but to the east. Here's the annexation, here's the subject property highlighted. The request by the applicant is for preliminary plat approval. What the applicant has submitted is two lot preliminary plat. This shows details of the property. This is the outlook apartments in Springville, the city border starts here, North Industrial Park. The jail complex is just off the screen to the south. Under construction right here is the waste transfer station, just directly to the south. Now, what's unique about this application, it should be rather straightforward. This is the plat, shows one larger lot and a smaller lot. The tricky part is the smaller lot to the east of the creek. And so if you've had a chance to note the conditions, one thing that came up in the DRC was number three, potentially having that listed as a future phase. There, there's just some concerns raised with the staff as far as making sure and verifying with UDOT that there will be potential access to the property. And it's my understanding that the applicant has been in coordination with UDOT to gain such approvals. Our only concern was that we don't want to potentially give approvals to a lot that cannot be provided access. And so if it can't be here, then something else would have to be worked out. Number three is an ongoing study, as far as I know, that has not been completed. I could lean to Byron to see if he has any updates, but the city is working with Springville as far as setting the, the creek that runs through the area. And so as the planning commission sees fit, specifically number three, we can invite the applicant up in just a second to kind of talk to, talk through some of the things that they've done as far as updating the plans for access and utilities and things of that nature.
You're saying access, because there's a road to the north, right, proposed?
Yeah, it's a state highway.
Could be a secondary access?
Well, at this point, you have a new intersection here as this road is going in. And then the concern that was raised is the spacing from here to here, whether or not that would meet UDOT's spacing requirements. And so, one thing that we had talked about was potentially would you allow a shared access on the property line so that as the area develops, there'd then be a designated access point that would meet their spacing requirements from the intersection.
Where's, where's Springville four hundred north?
This is four hundred south and SR seventy-seven, yep. So north is to the right on this image. There's a new city lift station that's right here, if you've had a chance to drive out there. This road is still under construction. It's some of the industrial area improvements that the last applicant was just referring to. So if we go back one slide, let's see. Well, let me go back, Byron, can you go back one?
So page two of the exhibits is, north is up.
Yeah, so north is up on this one.
Oh, there we go.
Here's the creek.
There we go.
So lot one, and then this triangle would be lot two. What you're referring to is a site plan that the applicant is currently working through that potentially shows how the property would be developed after subdivision approvals. But we don't want you to get hung up on these details other than those that would apply to preliminary plat. But I'm sure the applicant would love any heads up feedback as far as his project goes.
Great, let's hear from the applicant.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Go ahead, Lauren. Take your, take your, uh, last year.
Sir, if you have any comments, please come up with a microphone.
This isn't a public hearing. Larkin Pollock, Elevate Engineering, representing the owner of the property. As far as the condition number three, Brandon, Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that condition came up more so because in the DRC, it was mentioned that that parcel may be in Springville and not Spanish Fork.
We, did, well, Brandon, do you want to?
I, I'll share my opinion, it is not in Springville, period.
Clearly, yes, it's not.
We agree. Joseph Ernished.
And so I think that was a little bit of the basis of the future phase for the second lot on the east side of the canal. As far as the UDOT access is concerned, we are working with UDOT, we do have legal access there, but currently are pursuing shared access options with the user to the east. See if we can, that's what UDOT wants. But we do have, we do have legal access there regardless. So the other part of the access that I want to mention is that we could access from the road to the west through the industrial park to that lot as well. So it would have access either way, it's just determining exactly how it's gonna work.
And one, one, Joseph Ernest, one ask that we'd have, just for the sake of time, because we're gonna develop the whole thing, the, that piece and then a piece to the south, is the preliminary plat approval. This is consistent with the underlying zone, we're not asking for a master plan or anything like that. This is approved as of right in the zone. But we're completely comfortable that you require an access be provided to that portion prior to final plat approval. And that should give the city all the teeth they need to allow us to move forward.
Is that in the conditions, or is that something we would add?
I think he was proposing replace number three with that condition.
Any other questions for that?
So what's this, can you tell us about what this development is?
Yeah.
This is an industrial development?
The four buildings on the west side of the canal will be industrial office warehouse. And then the building on the east side of the canal is office, an office building.
With the Dry Creek study, doesn't that include some improvements to happen to Dry Creek? And would the applicant be doing those, or that all within the city, the county, who would be doing that?
Byron might be able to answer it. My recollection from comments the public works director has made is there's some concerns that they hope to address with the study, such as what elevations might be appropriate. This, this proposed elevation is well above what Chris was talking about, and so there's no concern with needing to massively fill the site. But then there has been leakage over the years, and so the idea is how to best handle that. One thing that both cities are looking at is, is it's a natural feature that you can drain to as far as storm drainage, and so resolving things of that nature, is there anything else I'm missing?
No, I think you covered it well. Dry Creek's actually operated and maintained by the drainage district, so neither city really maintains it or operates it. It's owned and operated by a drainage district, so it's kind of in conjunction with them trying to get a study on capacity and elevation and, and what it needs to look like if we dump it more water into it, I think.
And any of those, any of those findings would be the applicant's to put into place, to implement?
I wouldn't feel that.
As part of the site improvement, no?
The applicant, to me, it'd be specific to what the findings are and how they might apply to their property. But I don't think a facility wide enhancement would be something to place under the applicant.
Thank you, Brad, for answering. That might be the first time that John didn't jump to answer something like that. And we actually had staff answer. He wasn't here. Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, would you, you guys think that we should go with what Mr. Ernest recommended?
On number three, yes.
Did anybody write that down? Require the applicant, applicant to provide access? To the?
Lot on the east side of Dry Creek. Before any future phase can be developed there.
With final plat approval, I think is what, did I hear you say that?
Because we, because we plan on doing it simultaneously, we didn't, we actually don't want it to be a future phase. What, what we're just hoping is, if you're, if you're open to it, is provide the preliminary plat approval contingent upon providing access to that eastern portion prior to final plat approval. Because here in Spanish Fork, you have to get preliminary plat approval and then final plat approval before you can record. So I'll give the staff all the teeth they need to make sure we get the access there.
That, that just accelerates when you have to do those, or the staff.
Okay, I have it written down, is anybody else? I've done a lot of motions, but I'll do it if you want. Okay. I move that the preliminary plat be approved based on the following, the findings and conditions and with the addition of requiring the applicant to provide access to the lot east of the creek prior to final plat approval.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And just clarification, that's striking, you're correct.
Striking condition three.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The next topic is the River Meadows Commercial Center. Commissioner Ursch, are you also recused for this one?
Yes.
My goodness.
And we actually drove by this site, I think Commissioner Warnock pointed it out. This was opposite of the Treveson main proposal. I appreciated their exhibit that showed how this was laid out. Keeping it very brief and short, this is part of the larger Sky Meadows subdivision. Some of you may recall that it was the plans as far as the replacement of the Fritzie Building, which is here. Maybe this will work? No? I just want the pointer. Well, everybody can see the cannery, and if you haven't been out there recently, I believe the asphalt's down on the streets, or is it about to?
Sky Meadows.
Sky Meadows?
Could you speak up, Brandon, it's hard to hear you, sorry.
Sorry, is that better?
Yes.
I don't know how, I don't know how close I'm supposed to lean in. All right, we'll stick to the topic at hand. What we've got is a phase in the Sky Meadows subdivision, the preliminary plat, which the applicant has come back to amend to clarify and dictate what is being proposed. And so the current proposal is this north part of the property. So to the south would be the phase that includes the multifamily stacked flats. Townhomes would be the phase to the southwest. This is tucked right up at the intersection of Arrowhead Trail and Main Street. So what the applicant's looking at, this is the preliminary plat, as was indicated by the applicant on the last item, the final construction drawings and details would be worked out with the final plat, which does not come before the planning commission for approval that's handled by the DRC. And so what you're looking at tonight is just a request to take the property that was previously identified on the Sky Meadows preliminary plat as a commercial corner, and they're looking to break it up into the, the four lot arrangement that you see here. And then as previously provided, the applicant has also furnished a layout of how the property might develop. And so if I, oh, there it was. If I remember correctly, there was a quick quack coming soon sign on this corner. This is where they're looking to locate it, it would have a shared access, then direct access off of Arrowhead here, and access off of Main Street here. But we're not looking at the layout tonight, we're focusing mainly on the four lot configuration. Looking through the staff report, we do have a few red lines that are being worked out, some utility things that will be addressed with the final plat. And then, as noted, there was some additional right-of-way dedication that potentially might be needed, that was something that was gonna be looked at with engineering for this right turn movement up here. And so that, that is what condition number three is referencing. Any questions for staff at this time?
So access, I'm sorry, I can't, it's blurry to me, access to the proposed car wash is off Arrowhead.
You'd have a right and right out, if I'm seeing that correctly, here, and you'd have a full movement, uh, access here.
In and out. And then where's their queuing?
And then where's the queuing? All the way?
As proposed, the queuing would start here and come back through here. And so something with the site plan we'd flush out is, flush out is exactly, you know, give us an exhibit showing exactly how many cars might fit before it co-mingles with the shared access.
And this is, everything proposed here is consistent with what it was designated?
Correct. So this is currently zone C two commercial.
Yeah.
So the preliminary plat, so there's four?
Yes, four lots.
Four lots. Meant to be four businesses.
I wouldn't necessarily correlate it that way because as indicated on this exhibit, you might have a multi-tenant building here. This is just a preliminary layout. That potentially could be four different tenant spaces. Looks like three potentially here and this looks like a gas station and a car wash. And so as.
Those are illustrated though, right?
Yes. And so somebody could come in and that might be, you know, one unit or two units or three or four. But it's showing the potential billable area based on compliance with potential parking demands tied to those uses. So once again, the focus tonight is just the preliminary plat, but we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would the applicant actually anything?
Joseph Ernest, it's currently a one lot. It's a big one lot and we're going to try to make it four. And I'm here for, to answer any questions you might have.
Anything you think we need to know about it?
No, it's zone C two and the uses are going to be C two. And we're asking for a preliminary plat approval that's consistent with the underlying zone, not a master plan development plat or anything like that. So it should be easy, hopefully. You should get approval.
Is there any thinking about access or?
I think that'd be, that will be worked out as these come forward. I mean, even that being a, a car wash is, is up to approval later on of everything. But it is. It, everything, that will all be scrutinized at a later, at a later time. For me, it is, it's taking one lot that was C two, which could have a lot, that land could have bigger impacts and just divide it into four makes it a little more versatile, versatile for the applicant to sell it off easier also. But it doesn't undermine the, or degrade the city's use of that corner, which it, it makes it a nice corner the way they have it laid out here if that would come to fruition.
Other comments? Entertained a motion.
I don't have my.
I'll make that motion that we approve the River Meadows Commercial Center preliminary map pending the findings and conditions of the city staff.
I second. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm sure the motion passes.
And that was just, that was just legislative, not recommendation? That this doesn't go to city council or does?
Not legislative, it was administrative.
Administrative.
But you are the land use authority.
Okay.
So that's why.
So this isn't going to, this isn't to recommend to the city council. This is us saying, good job.
Buck stops with you guys.
Okay, our last topic of the evening, I assume?
We have two more.
Two more?
Yes, we have.
I've got one more on my agenda.
Discussion River Run.
Yep.
And discussion B, other business.
You might have a hard one getting that by the chairperson.
River Run or other business.
Try to deliver.
Okay, let's go on to topic eight. Let's get to topic, number eight at least and go from there.
They're way too comfortable back there.
So just to preface this, this is a discussion. There's not going to be any motions or actions taken tonight.
We're looking for either a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Thumbs up or thumbs down or feedback?
Yeah.
All the above.
Okay.
So we actually drove by this tonight as well. River Run. This is showing the full layout of the project. If you remember, it came in with Sam drowned with Concord Homes and this north, oh. Got to work with me, man. You can't make me look bad. All right.
It's not possible, Brandon, you look great. Wow.
Thank you. I lost my train of thought. This north parcel, potential area that the city's purchasing to expand the fairgrounds. If you've been by or noticed it when we went by today, part of phase A has been constructed. And the way it's broken out, I think I actually have the phasing plan. Oh, now it won't let me. There we go. So this is the overall phasing plan. Here you can see how it ties in with Annie's Acres. We're focused on River Run. You can see plat A has been recorded. It's under construction. Plat B is the next phase. We have C and then D after that. What the applicant's looking for tonight is discussion on the townhome product that's being built. And so the project is under contract to be sold or has it been sold?
Sold.
Sold. Okay. So the proud new owners of River Run are here tonight. This was the, I can't speak. This was the Concord Homes product that you previously looked at. So this, I ran out today and took pictures. This is kind of showing what I'd consider the front. You've got the front doors, the porches. You can see the different materials and colors that they intended to use. One concern that, I don't remember who brought it up. At the planning commission, somebody brought up the concern with the repetitive nature because they only had one product. And if you go back a slide, maybe? So if you go back a slide, you can see we have quite a few buildings. I can't remember the exact number. But this was the product that they presented to the planning commission. This was what was approved. This is another look at the front. Of particular emphasis was the ends facing the street. We actually had three different iterations that were provided before we got to this one. And we appreciate your guys' attention to detail as far as enhancing the end elevation. This is just showing the interior alleyways. And as you looked in all these pictures, we've got, you know, the shared alleyways, we've got landscaped areas. Those aren't necessarily being changed. What's with the change in the building elevations, there's a change in the footprint as well. And so staff and DRC will look at the elevation or civil plans and the landscaping more in detail. But tonight we'd like your input as far as the potential change for the buildings and the exterior elevations. This is the interior end. So there's a wall that separates Annie's Acres and River Run. This is the east end of the units. And on the other side, it's the west end that's adjacent to the commercial.
At that elevation right there, the blue is hardy board, cement board siding?
Looks like vertical board and pattern, hardy board, yes.
The light gray is what?
Horizontal hardy board.
Still hardy, okay.
Mm-hmm. And then we've got brick. I can't remember if they have some shingles on some of them, but those are the two main, two main building products is the hardy board, planks and board and button with the, with the brick. Now to jump into what the applicant would like to propose. I kind of picked out a few of the highlights. We do have two sets of plans that the applicant provided that we can also pull up if you'd like to take a deeper dive or if there's something that I missed. Oh. Sorry, that's still off. So you can't really see it, but the way they're set up currently is you have the kitchen, the main dining entry areas with the two car garage for each unit on the main level. Upper level is three bedroom, two bath. So the applicant has two different distinct elevations. And my understanding is both would be built in the project. This is the first one. So it's got a different look and feel, different roof style, different treatments for the front porch and whatnot. You can see, I had it there for a second. You can see some of the emphasis on the end unit facing the street. We've got some pop outs, some articulation on the roof, different features as far as the materials and how it's applied. This is the black and white version. This is showing the interior. Let me jump to the other elevation real fast. So this is the second one. This one has some similarities to the current one, but it also has some differences. You can see a lot of similar product to the current one as far as the vertical and horizontal and the brick. And so what we're looking for tonight, and we can, we can look at any.
What does change here at the footprint? The both, that's a much different footprint.
It's not as much as you think. And so I'll let the applicant kind of talk through what's expanding, what's different.
My concern is those three middle ones that appear to be going into the alleyway more of what is already a tight alleyway in my opinion.
So this was one thing that we actually talked through. And so it won't be coming closer to the street.
Not the street, the adjacent townhome?
Yeah.
And the alley that connects, that both garages open into?
Yeah.
Okay, so it won't be go, they won't be coming closer again?
We wouldn't have a decrease in the size of the alley. And so what, you can jump up here if you'd like. We'll have him introduce himself. So what we're looking for tonight is just direct feedback if you support or do not support the change or if you'd like them to go back to the drawing board.
What are the changes in footprint? I had you officer going through that.
We'll have the applicant speak to that. One thing I know off the top of my head is we've got an increase in the depth of the garage space. And then I don't, I don't recall.
My name's Jake Horan with Keystone Construction. Keystone's been a vertical builder for a couple of years now, getting close to 10 years. We've focused quite a bit on townhomes specifically for the last seven or eight years. And we've really tried to fine tune that process and be able to provide a very desirable product, both from the end user and buyer standpoint as well as on the city's side. One thing that Brandon mentioned as we came in to look at River Run was really a lack of parking and kind of some of the constraints in that project where a lot, where all of the buildings are alley load product, so they're rear load and they all face each other where there's no street parking in front of each of the units. And that really limits, you know, options for both the residents and guests coming in. So one of the changes as we started diving into the product that we would build here is just making sure that we utilize the space. As we were working through the details of the project, we did not want to have to go back and come back basically with a new drawing board of layouts and designs for roads, alleys, utilities. We largely wanted to be able to keep that as it is. And as Brandon mentioned, all of the alleyways and all of the utilities are all staying in the same exact positions that they're in and approved in so far. With that, obviously, as you can look through the detail of our floor plan changes, they are still actually quite similar to the product that Concord built. Some minor changes. We did increase the garage depths about a foot deeper. So that does allow for cars to actually fit in the garage because that's usually a constraint that we see in a townhome project is a builder will come in and put the garage to right at 20 feet or when it gets built, it's actually slightly less than 20 feet. And it just becomes something that really puts a constraint on the community and the ability to utilize the garages for parking. So that was one of the biggest changes that we made to the floor plan. We still tried to utilize and put a focus on the streetscape because we knew that was an important aspect for the city to make sure that that stayed as appealing as possible. Outside of that, we did adjust the stairs, really was the biggest thing in how they came up. We, on our end units, if you want to go maybe one slide to the right for the second story.
So you added a foot depth to the garage?
Yep.
Did that come out of living space or did you, did you just push the front out more?
Our overall footprint from end to end only grew about six inches. And it largely is a function of, I wonder, I don't know if you actually have this, but we did an analysis of from the curb in the alley on one side to the curb and alley on the other side and the two townhome buildings in between what that would look like. And it actually allows us to have slightly more space in between the units and still keep the driveways on the back and the alleys in the same place. Largely that's due to how we've configured the second story and the pop outs associated with it. And so on the second story, Sam on the Concord product had about a two foot jog in the buildings to where like on the end unit, for example, on the front for the master bedroom and the walk-in closet there, he had a two foot jog. And we've shrunk that down to a one foot jog. It still gives the building that dimension that you're looking for, but allows it to just kind of fit in a better space. So we were able to then grow the garage, but still keep pretty much everything as far as the floor plan upstairs and the living space in that same.
Jake, right?
Yep.
So my question's the same as Todd's. So.
Sure.
What's the livable square footage for your proposal versus what's there now?
I don't know off the top of my head what Sam's is. Let me pull this up and I can show, give you that info.
Do we have those?
It should.
As part of this?
Yep.
Didn't they say on the father?
It should say.
If you can pull up the PDF.
And my next question will be bedroom count. What's the difference in bedroom count?
Bedroom count is the same.
So I'm glad you actually brought that up. One of the things that we've tried to do as well is create a product that allows for a four bedroom unit. And so on the end units, we have an option where the buyer can either have it as a loft upstairs or create it into an additional bedroom. And we feel that that greatly enhances the livability for families in that.
It's a good feature.
You can, you know, still grow into it versus be pretty limited fairly quickly in your townhome, so.
And will require more cars for families.
Right.
If you've got more than you're having.
Right.
Teenagers that want cars and.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So do you know the livable square footage of your unit that you're proposing?
Yeah, let me pull it up really quick for you.
If it's not there, Brandon, that's fine. I just, I thought it would be on that page.
Yeah, I'll pull up on the PDF. It'll be a lot.
When I say livable, I'm just basically excluding garage.
Right.
Are the, it's the first phase that's built out? Is it 100% occupied?
I think it's pretty close. So in plat A, I believe he has two buildings that he hasn't done yet. And I want to say I think he's pretty much all sold out of that first phase. We have acquired the remaining phases, so we didn't pick up anything that was left in plat A. As far as livable space, we are at. We are at.
Sorry, I don't see it on here. But they're, they're three bedroom and then the end units have a loft with, that could be a fourth bedroom?
Correct. So I believe on our interior units, we are at just over eighteen hundred square feet. So in River Run, we do not have any basements because of the groundwater. And so, um, everything's above grade, so it'll be fully finished square footage. So eight, just over eighteen hundred square feet finished. I know Sam was right there. I think he was slightly under around the seventeen ninety mark, if I remember correctly.
Bedroom sizes?
Um, on our bedroom sizes, we have a few. Pull that up for you as well. So the secondary bedrooms are roughly all ten by twelves, twelve and a half. And it's the same for that additional fourth bedroom if you were to add that in. And then on your master bedroom, they go to, um, just actually be right at thirteen feet by. What's that? Fourteen feet roughly?
With the master bath, not including the master bath.
Uh, yeah, excluding that. So just the actual bedroom size.
That'll work.
Yeah.
Should work.
We actually build a product very similar to this floor plan in American Fork in another project we're doing. And it's been actually by far our most popular floor plan. In that community, we have seven different town home floor plans and this product does extremely well. Um, the two-story product, you know, it's usually more desirable not having to do as many stairs and. Um, it lays out really well as well, gives a good, you know, functional space and, and allows for a good. Mix of product as well, so.
And you're looking for two different exteriors?
Yep, so.
How would those alternate? How are you planning on implementing them into the site?
That's a great question. Um, our initial plan is we would do it to where both units facing each other would be the same, um, product. And then we would alternate it throughout the community to give it a little more dimension and diversity versus just being the same exact product throughout the, um. Row of the community basically. Um, we feel that's one thing that will enhance the appeal of the community. Right now in River Run, it's all the same exact elevation and color scheme. And so it will feel very repetitive once you actually get going down two hundred east. Versus allowing some of those elevation changes and color scheme changes will really kind of give it a much more feel of. Diversity and, and more of an appeal to a buyer and we feel as a community as well.
So on this one here, we have a little bit of brick on the, the two vertical lines of it and then a wainscot of it around it.
Right.
And then that front pop out which would be your, that's the other bedroom not adjacent to the master one.
Correct. Yeah, that would be your additional on the second.
Your loft area, right?
Right.
That's, that's just. Hardyboard.
Hardy, correct.
My feel, we'll get that since we're talking about discussion, giving feedback.
Sure.
I would love to see that as brick.
Okay.
I, I, I feel like that, that is one of, when we go back to the comments Brandon made about our opinions on the, the curb pill of it.
Mm-hmm.
We saw something sim, I mean, different, the old layout, but with a similar uniformity in it. And we liked, uh, seeing that as a material used. Um, that'd be my feedback.
Which portion Todd are you saying?
The brand, the dark brown, uh.
All the way.
On the, on the side.
Just on that, just on that elevation. I don't know that I mind as it's going through what would be the front of the town home.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's got a nice breakup where, where it has vertical elements of the brick. It, it'd be just on the street side. That I would have that comment.
Make it that.
And that is one.
The white brick fits on the bottom?
I think so. I think that'd be the element I would tie in. I mean, I'm not an interior designer. I just play one every once in a while.
One thing we had talked about.
Are you looking at both stories or?
I would say both stories. For me that, to me that will look better. I know that increases cost in the brick. Uh, it's, it's much more than the, the hardy is, but, um.
But you're only talking about the street facing.
I'm only talking about the street facing side, yeah.
Which, which is, yeah, I, I, I'm okay with that distinction.
Yeah. I like the idea that you're gonna have both, I actually like having the, both the two side, the, the facing instead of doing it.
Right.
More repetitive than that. I, I think that's good. On the other elevation, could we go to that?
So one, one thing on this before we leave, I think each elevation is two color options. So what I pulled up here, if you scroll through this Byron. So.
Okay.
Sorry, too fast.
Wait, no, that would be it, right?
Yep, go, go one more. Maybe, there you go. So it largely, uh, maybe actually go.
That's what we just looked at.
One more. So the, the big difference is in the color of the hardy. Um, we do have an option that we've done on our American Fork product that's similar to this. Where, yeah, there, there you go. Where it goes to the black brick. And it has a, a very good feel and, um, ties in really well as well between the two different options.
Do you have a full color rendering of the, of the second color option?
We don't have a rendering, but we could send you some pictures of the AF product that, I mean.
You don't need to, I personally don't need a rendering as nice as the other one. A picture would.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, the big difference is up there, those are four plex versus these are mainly five plexes through River Run, so. Um, but yeah, we can send that over.
How many units are, are you talking about building here?
So with the remaining phases of River Run, we have a hundred and fifty units left. And one thing that we will be coming to you guys with over the next couple of months. Um, our sister company, White Horse Developers is under contract on the Peterson piece, just kind of kitty corner, um, to River Run, just to the east. So we will hopefully be able to utilize some of this product if that's the route the city wants to go in that project as well. But for sure, obviously with River Run, the remaining hundred and fifty units of the project is what we're wanting to do here.
And of, and we've only been talking about one floor plan or is that, is that the floor plan for?
Yep.
All of them?
Got it. Same, same idea as what Sam was doing with the middle units being one and then the end unit slightly tweaked from that one. So the two different floor plans basically between the two.
This elevation I, I quite like. I, I know it has the, the roof or the porch area that acts as a divider there.
Right.
So, uh, I don't, I personally don't have an issue with that one. I also like the introduction of the, the shipwreck up in the, the eve. That looks, you know, it looks nice in the vertical orientation.
And we are open really to doing either just the one elevation or both. We personally feel that it's nice to have the two different elevations.
I agree.
In a unit, or in a community that's that big so that it does allow for a better feel throughout versus just the one repeated every time.
I'm glad you brought that because to me, if we're just talking about doing one of these, I like the current elevation. I'd say just keep with that.
Right.
We're talking about mixing it up with the two elevations you presented. That's what would get me going in favor. If, if we're just gonna go like this, I'd say no, I like the one that's currently there. Why don't we just stick with that one?
Yeah.
Um, the idea of changing it up for the, so it's a little more unique, there's some more changes in the development. That's what makes it appealing to me.
Yeah.
I like the mix.
Perfect.
I like the idea, I like the recommendation of doing the brick on the ends.
Sure, yeah, that's easy enough.
And my, my concern with this project has always been just the distance between the garages. Here you take that into account.
Yeah.
And you're, you're giving them some more square footage access. One of the common complaints that we always hear from townhomes, the garages aren't used for parking anyway.
Right.
Um. Uh, I, that's good.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're very sensitive to that as well, just with our experience that we've had over thousands of units and doing it is that it. If it's not planned well, then it does become a, an issue for sure. And it's something that after we're done, then the city has to manage, right, and, and hear about. So to try and help with that, that's one of the big reasons we wanted to adjust that floor plan slightly was to make that a, a more useful space, so.
I know that this isn't part of what your feedback you're looking for, but can we look at the, the layout, the whole layout of the whole thing again? I'd like to look to see where the guest, um, parking, where we have visitor parking in this.
Site plan.
In the site plan.
So each alley at the end has some parking stalls. Um, we then counted, well, sorry, I shouldn't say it that way. We didn't count towards the calculation, the street parking, but there is the option of some available on street parking. Um, we can't zoom in, but if you look at the, the ends of the alleys, you can see some have six, some have four. And then as you get to South Lane, uh, some of them are only two. Um, but that was where the applicant could tuck some of that parking in. And then in the central, you've got some parking that's associated with the clubhouse. And then on the both ends, you've got some parking by the park features.
We're gonna get this worked.
Um, I don't know. Um, I'm wondering how that, how their parking is going and if there is, if residents are using those end. Park, those park, extra parking spots or, or. People.
I've, I've noticed them being used, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, and so I wonder how visitor parking is working for them. Anyway.
Yeah. Is it accurate that the site plan's approved or just?
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing, the only thing we've worked with the applicant on is just one thing that Sam's ran into an issue with the county is just making sure that the. Floor plan fits within the condo space as indicated on the plats. And so we would just work closely with them to make sure that if they don't, then we would just reapprove those plats with whatever footprint is needed. So there's no issues when it goes to the county.
Gotcha.
There you go.
Wow. I'm pointing up the ceiling, but it's there. So where, where are we? Is it, is this a dividing line? You guys are going to be having everything here?
Yes. Correct, yeah.
Okay, so it's everything to the north of plot A?
Correct.
Okay. What about, isn't this the clubhouse?
Yep.
Okay. Any changes to it?
So we actually were emailing Brandon back and forth this week about that as we're working through the design on that as well. Um, from what we've seen for the items Sam has given, it's really just been a conceptual rendering of the clubhouse. And not necessarily a detail of exactly the floor plan or, um, specific items related to it. So that is something we'll start working through closely with Brandon and Dave and the rest of the team to address. And ideally, we would like to keep it obviously to the same color schemes that we're going to be building throughout the community. But as far as the elevation of it, I think we are fine with the, the layout that he's proposed and that you guys have approved in the development agreement. And we don't see any issues with that.
So this, this exhibit, uh, sorry to go off on a tangent, but I don't have a pointer, but you can see the Peterson piece. It's just to the north of Annie's Acres. Yep, that parcel right there.
Yeah, that's the piece that we're also under contract on to close on here in a couple of months. So we'll start working with you guys on that one as well and look forward to that also.
So. This road will continue through?
Yep.
Will these tie up?
So that road is Volunteer Drive right there that you were highlighting. Um, but yeah, the plan is for that to go through and tie in over to.
River Bottoms.
River Bottoms Road. And I.
Will any of these others, or will that be required for?
It depends on, so the applicant has the ability to build this out as it's shown. But then they could also come back to you with an amended layout and say, okay, we've added X amount of acres, so we're now adding X amount of units. And then at that point, they could propose to you a new street layout for that north portion.
Okay. Which is something that we've looked at and I think largely will continue to work through and get your guys' feedback on to utilize and try and make that as appealing as we can. We're sensitive obviously to where River Run is such a long, you know, project and it's not very wide to allow for much of a deviation in the current layout of it. But as we do work through a layout for Peterson, if there is something that's beneficial to us and the city, that's something that we will look at.
So I, I don't want.
I don't wanna cut off any further conversation, but I'm just looking at my notes now. So at this point, Commissioner Ernest, you would like to see just some pictures of the existing product at their American Fork.
At this point, it pains me, it pains me to say this, but I agree with Todd on almost everything he said so far.
And Todd liked the idea of.
That usually happens, he doesn't want to admit to it.
Two different elevations with the two different color schemes with the only change being on the end units. Handing it with the brick.
Okay.
Okay. Any other feedback for the applicant?
I think it looks great. I like it.
Thank you.
And yes, we've seen the other color, yes, on that.
Awesome. We appreciate the, uh, uh, new owners of River Run taking the time to come and, uh, present to you.
It's a pleasure to meet you guys and we look forward to working in Spanish Fork.
Thank you.
Thank you Jake.
Thank you.
That was a long meeting for them to sit through.
Has anybody gotten, I mean, a call from John saying he's locked out?
He told me he was gonna leave early.
Okay.
He said he was gonna come back, but something must have happened.
This is the bonus part of the planning commission meeting. Little, little.
But wait, there's more.
Yeah.
This is the other business.
Yeah.
Sweet.
I had hoped to touch on this while we were visiting some sites tonight or maybe while we ate, so I actually printed hard copies. But, uh, I'll give Mr. Haslam maybe a chance. Are you gonna be able to get that, do you think, Brandon? Or sorry, Byron?
What?
That email that I sent.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah.
Okay, great. Vesta, the folks that bought the Western Distribution Center, they've been in front of you a few times to talk about taking that little piece of land. It's kind of up on the hill above the river dripping rock, uh, doing something residentially with that. They have another proposal that, uh, I think actually it was a planning commissioner that said something that they then took and kind of expounded upon. So simply put, I'm gonna throw two images out tonight in a moment. Either via some kind of digital display or with hard copy. And just looking for feedback from Alani's perspective. Um, I'll start to describe it. Um, they're looking to expand what could be developed residentially. Um, which does a couple of different things from a design perspective, but I appreciate they've been candid. Uh, it's really about generating some, some cash flow quickly to be able to pay for, uh, what really is a very expensive road connection down to Powerhouse Road. If you can remember that, we'll look at it here in, in just a moment. Um, one thing that I've discussed with them about this, it's really a very new idea. We just met a few days ago to talk about it. Is, uh, I think it's really interesting that that million square foot building got built there in the first place. In a lot of ways, you know, looking at the community today and so forth, that's not where today I feel like industrial uses necessarily fit. US six is a busy corridor.
It's crazy windy though, so.
But it's, there we go, so maybe.
It's just crazy windy.
Well, and, um, that building was built in the mid nineteen nineties, mid to late nineteen nineties. And, yeah, Mr. Clayson, several of you remember the community then. Um, at the time, you had an explosives plant in Mapleton to the north. You had a couple of different gravel extraction operations right around the Western Distribution, what is now the Western Distribution Building. There you had a different feel than I think what it's come to have as neighborhoods have moved closer to the mouth of the canyon and so forth. Um, but, uh, the idea of doing something like this, um, Byron go from back.
What's the URL?
Keep it simple.
What's that? Sorry, say that again? Spanishfork.org? Oh, uh. What is it titled, Dave, the email?
Yeah, that's Spanishfork.org.
I, I don't think any of the commissioners talked about residential lot A, did we?
No, not that I'm aware of.
But residential B, we definitely discussed, discussed. Having them be more single family units, but I don't remember anything ever being talked about by anybody for residential A.
Wasn't talked about as residential A with the idea of can you do a little bit larger residential to help maybe make some things work or spread things out? B.
In area B, nothing in A.
Well, regardless, what do you think? Well, regardless, what do you think?
Let's just show general plan right there, right now.
Most likely industrial, I'll double check that, it should be.
It's a guidance, I was just curious.
Property's been zoned industrial for, I would say, at least twenty-five years.
What residential are they talking, are they talking single-family homes? They talking townhouses, they talking multifamily?
Those duplex.
Certainly multifamily, so some type of attached product, and I think they're somewhat pliable to that. Numbers matter to them.
Oh, just to them? But like, numbers matter? I've never heard, what? A developer cares about the numbers? What?
And I don't see any single-family of the idea we brought up in residential B.
Is that a problem? Is that a problem?
That's a problem.
We feel like, I think the feedback we've given is residential B is prime views, prime area, and that that's, that's the single-family home.
And
That's what they're, that's what they're trying to show here.
I know Commissioner Menon Hall feels that way, so that's three.
I got more feedback. This is the third time he's came for us for our feedback, taking my freaking time to give him feedback, and he hasn't listened to it.
Because of the single-family on
On residential B.
Residential B, yeah.
Todd, I think he thinks he's listening, and here's why. Glass half-full for just a second, even though
Glass half-full, I love glass half-full.
He's only halfway listening. He's, I think because it's light yellow, this is potentially single-family homes here. And then this is where he stopped. This is where, just because our zoning colors, our light yellow would be a more of a single-family home project, product.
Right, but on the back.
And then residential A would be townhomes.
But look at the back of the page.
I'd like to take everything I just said off the record.
Is that the second time tonight you just like to agree with Todd?
Fifty percent of the time, I'm right every time.
I think, didn't he talk to us about, in B, obviously that's a great plan, I wandered around down there, and that would be an awesome place to live. However, the infrastructure doing, going, that road alone's gonna cost, he wouldn't be able to do single-family homes and be able to do it. Correct.
Flat out, no doubt, so.
He can't do single-family in A and then higher density in, excuse me, single-family in B and higher density in A and make it work?
I don't know the answer to that, but if that is something that you think's worth pursuing.
That's our feedback.
Say it again, what'd you say, was the feedback?
Single-family in B.
I just emailed it to you, did it come true?
And higher density in A, the townhouses, whatever.
Yeah, that's
B Haslam at Spanishfork.org?
And you're saying you're okay with that?
I am, yeah.
I'd be more okay with that.
I would like that more, and I mean, those would be prime lots down there, but I don't know how you should have enough to get your money back.
I feel like a fraud.
I guess I'm talking, yeah.
Higher density.
Yeah.
Then I guess.
And in A, you're right next to the industrial on the same
And the highway.
Yeah, so I don't see single-family working great in A.
But I could see high-density in A. It is windy.
I like the buffer for residential B, that buffer provides some wind breakage.
Yeah.
So does the industrial buildings there above residential B provides good wind breakage.
To give him a little bit of, to give him just a little bit of slack, he did talk about, I mean, I can, it seems like he talked about having high-end high-density, like a Park City-type, high-end, high-density.
I remember that, high-townhomes.
And I have, you know, I could, I could see that a little more.
Have we ever had a developer talk about a low-end townhouse?
I was gonna say.
But I think that John
I think they all see their townhouses as high-end Park City.
Yeah, but I could see John saying, I already said.
Okay, I'm gonna try to recap, and I think you so quickly, you guys have been pretty succinct. You're not really comfortable with multifamily on residential B?
Correct.
Sorry.
Honestly, I could see, oh, sorry, go ahead, recap.
Okay. Single-family on residential B. The idea of consolidating some density then on residential A. Any feel for what that might look like? Are we talking townhomes? Are we talking some type of stacked, one, sorry, two-story, three-story, combination of both?
I think a combination, because you have that industrial, they're right next to the industrial, so I could see an opportunity to maybe do more multifamily, higher-density
I just don't want to get too many stories.
Industrial.
Got it, okay. So what is, what is the most
The finger hook is probably what, twenty-four feet tall?
Forty-five.
Forty-five tall?
Yeah.
Really?
How about they have a forty-foot clearance van inside? In fact, I'll bet it's taller than forty-five.
Yeah, have you ever been in? They're really tall.
Do we have a special, in the industrial zone, is there a carve-out for if an industrial's next to residential?
A few.
What the setbacks are? Okay, good.
We do.
I could see even small lots with nice homes on them in B.
Yeah.
They don't have to be big lots, but having nicer homes.
Did you say for B?
For B.
Because there's people that want to have a nice home, but not a lot of yard, but enough yard.
Yeah.
Wasn't part of the discussion also that he needed a secondary entrance to come down through, to get, to go back to Mike's comment about putting the roads in? Didn't we need to have a secondary entrance down there anyway?
If you scroll down one, Byron.
So yeah, Byron, next slide. That, this is why we're having the conversation. I can't remember if he said this is four or five million dollars. Frankly, I think they're low on estimated cost of making this connection down to Powerhouse Road where it would align with River Bottoms Road to create a four-way intersection. If you can picture that. So this becomes the secondary access to the primary, which would stay the same, which one thing that I think is maybe worth talking about quickly even though it's late is, this still leaves you commingling traffic that would get back to the existing building. This is a proposed building as well, which incidentally
But didn't they have to go regardless? They have to have that secondary entrance regardless, right?
That has been our position as staff, yeah, and I don't think there's a way around that.
So that has to be put in anyway.
Right.
Whether it's single-family or duplexes or whatever. The vast majority of that costs.
At least that's been our position.
And we're building one in Mayo Falls right now, where we're crossing a canal. Not as big as our canal, but it's still, got all the headaches to go with it. That's that short a run, and that number's totally feasible. That's what we've experienced up there.
Well, just simply the land use, it's, I feel like we got to the end quick enough that I'm hearing that you're generally comfortable with the idea of there being less industrial development up there. This is, I started to say a moment ago, just a description of how one additional building could be constructed on the side, I think that's laid out at being about a six-hundred-thousand-square-foot building, whereas the big existing one is a million.
I have discomfort with the residential, the residences sharing the ingress and egress with the industrial. At that point, the uses together don't seem to make a lot of sense to me. That gives me some heartburn.
I think you can do the, I think do the finish with, are you talking about safety or are you talking about?
Yeah. I am actually.
So I was gonna say, you can make it look nice.
I'm also, I'm talking about safety and property enjoyment. That's all. I'm not, I'm just voicing my concerns here.
Yeah, I can see.
I don't know if I'm like, hard no, but I'm like, oh, industrial right next to residential, oh.
I think we talked about that up on our site, didn't we?
Well, and that's been, you know, before this came along, the idea really was to make this the entrance for residential, to keep that as the entrance for industrial.
And then a block would be commercial and industrial.
Like an emergency connection, the two wouldn't mix, so that's definitely different with this.
Isn't the residential B, it's a different lot, I'm asking.
Today, not necessarily, but
It's all one lot that's all zoned industrial now?
It is, all owned by one party. So, I, with what they're showing as lot Lot A, potentially a mix of different housing types, townhomes, maybe some small lot, single-family, maybe even condominium kinds of things. Any concerns with another industrial building there? One thing that they are trying to be sensitive to is the city's desire to have some non-residential uses in town. I really think they are trying to kind of split a baby here. They're in the business of, among other things, building industrial space. They do a lot of other things as well, but they bought this site with the idea that they were gonna build additional non-residential square footage up there. So. That's at least part of their thought process. Anything else that's worth passing along?
I'm not against industrial. Townhouses on
I have a few exclamation points besides some of the comments that
I would say too, from living up there, I know when they do shift change and stuff, that road gets backed up all the way down, so the, I mean, they could just move the guard shack or not make people check in, but there's, if you have residential, that road gets, it's all the way back to Jackrabbits.
Ticket in, for example.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be an issue too.
That's good feedback.
Management issue at least. Okay, and I didn't hear hell no, so to speak.
On residential A?
On, on, on just this concept in general, let's say if that is single-family.
Yeah, on residential, I think you heard.
Okay.
And that's all I heard.
Residential A has like a, at least a soft no for me. But you're right, never, you didn't hear a hell no for me.
And one of your primary concerns at least is mixing traffic.
Industrial and residential like that right next to each other just feels tough to me, feels tough. And mixing traffic makes that, those uses being right next to each other even worse.
I would need to see what the layout would be that would alleviate those fears. And, and make it make it an appealing place where people want, because we don't have a problem on the city twenty years from now.
Isn't that kind of like West Valley though, where they have those big Amazon buildings, they're just right up, those buildings and then residential right next to them?
They, I think, have slides that illustrate.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's right, but I'm saying that's what they have.
Cities different.
But also, they kind of run themselves, those Amazon buildings, they don't have that many employees, it's surprising. The newer ones are really automated.
Oh, so he's got the residential next to industrial, you know, other case studies to show us.
No, and I'm not saying it's right, I was up there helping the DNR and I thought the same thing.
They already had this prepared?
Yeah.
They anticipated? Oh, man, that's good. Nora saw like, hmm, it's not a great example.
It's not what we're gonna pattern after, huh?
West Jordan.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate this, they appreciate it. They've been, they've been good to work with, and I'll also mention, I think this is really their last check before they just develop it industrially. And that doesn't mean that
That works too.
that what we're seeing as parcel B ends up developing in an unattractive way. You could do some things there that would be non-residential, that, that wouldn't be an eyesore, wouldn't be incompatible with things like the golf course at all. Brandon and I, we were talking about the office, was that us? The concept of having someday some upscale office there and that type of thing.
Yeah.
It might be many decades down the road, but someday.
Good for them, good for the city, good for whatever, that'd be good use for them.
But this is what I needed, thank you, so that is it for us. Unless you have anything?
Did you want to talk anything about our joint meeting?
Just to mention that, thank you. We believe it's gonna start at six o'clock. We believe we will be in the Heritage Room over here, off to my left. More details to come.
Confirm the date, May ninth?
A week from yesterday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the ninth.
I will be traveling for work.
We will miss Commissioner Carroll, for sure. We will spend some amount of time on training, something between forty-five minutes and an hour, it's mandatory by way of one of our insurers, I believe. We want to talk about recent legislative action and how that is impacting what we can do from a land use regulatory perspective. We'll talk a little bit about the general plan and some other things on our to-do list. And then whatever the commission and council want to talk about, the council had a long meeting last night, and I believe our mayor, he's up and near the river. Something between two o'clock and four o'clock. At least he has been every morning for the past several days, some of our administrative staff is the same way, so. By Tuesday of next week, people might be looking forward to adjourned closer to eight-thirty then, or we get some time, so. Something I had in mind.
Great, thank you.
Sounds great.
I mean, we adjourned a meeting.
I have a motion?
Second?
Ah, great, all favorite?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
How voted, is it better?
Yes, perfect.
Hey, thanks you guys, we appreciate it.